Welcome, everybody, to the March 2, 2023 Board of Education meeting. We'll begin tonight with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash, Tongva, Fernandino, Tatavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. With that, I will ask Mr. Everhuerta to come forward and to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huerta. Ms. Quiterio, would you please take roll call at this time?
Member Tavitt?
Present.
Member Ponser Kamkar is absent today. Clerk Aga Konian?
Present.
Vice President Weisberg?
Present.
President Ferguson?
Present. We have four board members in attendance, which means we do have a quorum, so we'll be able to move forward with the business of the meeting for tonight. Moving to item five on our agenda, reporting on closed session. We have the following actions were taken in closed session. The Board of -- first, on item 3A, the Board of Education met in closed session and voted to join in a class-action lawsuit. The motion was made by Dr. Aga Konian, seconded by myself, Mr. Ferguson, and the votes was unanimous with Ferguson, Weisberg, Aga Konian, and Tavitt all supporting. On item 3B, the Board of Education met in closed session and voted to agree to a proposed settlement of claims related to e-cigarettes and vaping issues. The motion was made by myself, seconded -- Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Ms. Tavitt, and carried unanimously with Ferguson, Weisberg, Aga Konian, and Tavitt all supporting. And on item 3C, the Board of Education met in closed session and voted to approve the notice of intent to suspend and the proposed statement of charges for employee number CL0019-23 as amended. That motion was made by myself, Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Weisberg, and that carried 4-0 with Ferguson, Weisberg, Aga Konian, and Tavitt all joining. That is all we have for reporting out on closed session. With that, we will move to item six, which is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from my colleagues? To members of the audience and to those at home, there are some adjustments to our agenda. The Board had a retreat and made some adjustments in total to our agenda, so I just wanted to highlight those at this time. First things first, you will see that there remains two periods of public comment. The final period of public comment at the end of our meeting is now a three-minute period of public comment. So if you do see something during our meeting, you want to come down, share your thoughts and opinions on something that has occurred during the meeting, you have the opportunity to do so. It will be a three-minute period of public comment, and we'll take that at the end of the agenda. Additionally, you will see, and in time, our cards will be updated, our speaker cards will be updated, but we're doing our best to try and get to the different issues that people may have during the course of public comment. So first, we are going to be starting by prioritizing student speakers first, so student speaker cards will be called first, followed by items -- those who are coming to speak on agenda items, so those issues that are on our agenda for that night. And then the following -- and then the last set of speakers that will be called will be speakers who are speaking on general issues of the Board of Education or general issues as it relates to the school district, so we'll be prioritizing speakers in that order. Tonight, we do have one student speaker that has labeled their card as such, but because the student speaker has identified that they want to speak with others, I'm going to call them with non-agenda items, and I'll be calling that tonight. So we will have our speaker cards updated as of the next meeting, but tonight, those are the adjustments to our agenda, and those are the updates. So I just wanted to let members of the public know. All of this is an effort, one, to get students home as soon as possible so that they can participate, two, to get people who are speaking on items that we're voting on that night home as well, and obviously, to make sure that everybody can talk to us about issues related to our district. So thank you for bearing with us for that little announcement, and again, thank you all for joining us here tonight. With that, we'll move to item seven, which is items for future agendas. Do my colleagues have any adjustments, or I'm sorry, any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to item number eight, which is announcements and presentations. This also is a new portion to our agenda. We are going to do -- our Board colleagues have agreed, we're going to keep this brief, where we will be able to announce different events that we've been able to participate in and/or, you know, meetings that we've attended, kind of a reporting-out moment. Additionally, this will be the time where we announce any adjournment motions or -- and also to celebrate our retirements in the district. Traditionally, we did that at the end of our meeting, but we want to be able to celebrate that up front. So I'm going to begin with Board member announcements and then move to reading the adjournments and the retirements. With that, I'm going to look at Ms. Tavitt first.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Move this closer. I just have a couple things to bring up. I wanted to congratulate the Burbank Rotary Club, the Noon Rotary Club, for celebrating their first hundred years with their centennial celebration last Saturday at Lakeside. The Noon Rotaries are one of Burbank Unified's supporters. They do several things for the school district, including Student of the Month awards every month at every school site, and also they do a Teacher Excellence Award, so we appreciate that and hope them continued success for their next hundred years, and also to congratulate the Ruben Field and Taylor families, who were awarded the Peter McGrath Lifetime Achievement Award. And if you knew Mr. McGrath, he was such an awesome human being, so that is an honor to receive that award. So thank you to the Noon Rotary Club for all they do for our school district. They're a great partner. Also want to offer condolences to the family of Jay Gudson, and I would like to ask at this time that we adjourn at a future meeting in honor of Mr. Gudson, who worked as a -- actually, he was a former student at John Burrows. He was a teacher, coach, and vice principal, and passed away way too young at the age of 67. He -- on Facebook, so many of the community members were, "Thanks for everything you did, Coach. Thank you, great teacher, had a major impact on me," and those are wonderful things to read, especially these days, to know that there was another human being that made an effort and made an impact on one of our students or another person. So thank you, Mr. Gudson, for your service to our district, and you will be missed. And so thank you for that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Excellent. We'll bring that back for a future -- we'll bring back that adjournment at the next meeting, and I also want to point out that Mr. McGrath is a former school board member in the Burbank Unified School District, so I want to acknowledge that service. Dr. Aga Konian, your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did attend the Noon Rotaries 100th anniversary, and it was great to see all of our friends there, and I do want to echo what my colleague said earlier.
Yes? He's a member of the Quanis.
That was a good one. There you go. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg?
Just want to say a big thank you to Edison Elementary. I got to hang out with a kindergarten class and a third-grade class today and read as part of Read Across America. It was fantastic, and thanks to both of the teachers for allowing me to co-op some of their teaching time. It was wonderful to see other people there, too. Councilmember Nikki Perez was reading. Principal Newt, I think Stephen Hubbell was there. I saw BTA President Diana Abosta running from classroom to classroom, as she is wont to do. So it's always great to see so many community members out and reading to our kiddos.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Dr. Aga Konian?
Thank you. I'm sorry, the dog took my thunder at the end, but, you know. I also did go to Edison, and I was joined with our council member, Ms. Tamala Takahashi. And as some of you already know, I read Pete the Scuba Cat, and I did bring my scuba gear with me, and students were wonderful, very good questions, and I'm looking forward to going to McKinley tomorrow, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. One, I want to take a moment. Obviously, this past week, we had an incredible storm that has impacted thousands of families throughout the Los Angeles region, including the city of Burbank, and so, one, to all those impacted, we're certainly thinking about you. I want to thank all of our facilities teams who are out there, keeping our schools, you know, as together as possible in these kind of unprecedented storms. So again, just thank you to all of our facilities teams, to all of our operations folks who made adjustments, who made accommodations, and to all of our teachers who have kept our students in during rainy weather. It's been a lot to manage, and just want to acknowledge that, and thank you for helping us get through this rather unprecedented moment. It is beautiful to see the snow on the hillsides. That's fun. I was not able to join -- I work in downtown. It did not snow there, but it did snow here, so sad that I missed it. Having said that, seeing some of the videos circulating, I know that it was a moment. So anyway, thank you again to all of our employees who, again, whether it was the rain, whether it was the wind, really helped take that on. And again, you know, I did ask for a report on that. Let's make that a continued practice, so anytime we're dealing with major rains, if we could get reports to the Board immediately on that front, just so that we, again, are tracking facility issues and impacts. And thank you for turning that around so quickly. Tonight, we are adjourning in celebration of Darlene Crane and her retirement. She began her service in 2014 to the district, and she's retiring from Hart Elementary School, so we do want to celebrate her tenure and time here in the Burbank Unified School District. And we will also be adjourning in memory. So if I can have the slides come up. The superintendent's office has been informed of the sad news of the passing of John Stenberg. John Stenberg was a longtime member of the community and active in a variety of causes. He passed on January 31. John was from Denver, Colorado, but a longtime Burbank resident for over 35 years, and an employee with the City of Burbank and the Burbank Water and Power Department for over 20 years. John was a man of deep faith, a parishioner at St. Finbar, and brother with the Knights of Columbus, Burbank Chapter. He was a barbecue master and enjoyed harvesting vegetables and fruits in his beautiful backyard, also a big L.A. Dodger and Denver Bronco fan, which I am, too. He is survived by his wife of over 40 years, Gloria, and their only child and daughter, Monica. I have had the privilege of getting to know Gloria and Monica in my time in the city of Burbank, and this is -- they are such an incredible family, an incredibly generous family, one who has given of their time, and through public services, how I got to know John. And so our deepest, most heartfelt condolences to the family as they go through this time of grief, and I just hope that this time really connects them with him and his legacy and his impact on their life in different ways. We are joining with the city council and adjourning in his memory, and it is our privilege to do so, and our deepest condolences to the family at this time. With that, we will move to item nine, which is reports from the Board. We'll begin with our student representatives, beginning with Ms. Tara Petrosian from Burbank High School.
Good evening, Board President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, distinguished Board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, and the wonderful Burbank community. So to quickly recap from the last meeting when I was here, to end off our winter sports season, on February 2, Burbank High School had our Decades theme pep rally, and that included short performances from each of our winter sports, and it even included a quick haircut from one of the performances. Later that night, it was an iconic rivalry game that we all love, and it was so fun to go head-to-head once again with Burrows. In recent news, Burbank High's very own NSYNC placed first at their competition at Esperanza this past weekend. They also won outstanding showmanship and outstanding music along with the first place, and we couldn't be more proud of them. This Friday and Saturday, our Vocal Music Association is also hosting Burbank Blast, which I'm assuming a lot of you know about, but if you don't, it's a competition with a total of 13 competition divisions that happens over two days. Unleashed, our advanced dance team recently competed at a competition at Beckman High School, where they also secured a multitude of awards. Our talented Unleashed group consists of only 22 members, and they break into different smaller groups for competition. So the groups include Small Jazz, Palm, Medium Hip-Hop, Large Dance, and Extra Small Dance. So I'm excited to say that all these groups placed at this past competition. Sixth in Small Jazz, fourth in Palm, second in Large Dance, and fourth in Extra Small Dance. This is Unleashed's first ever year during a full competition season, and they have placed at every competition so far, so I'm really proud of them, and I'm honored to have such amazing and dedicated students and dancers at Burbank High. In ASB News, our annual car show hosted by the junior class is back this year. The car show is on March 11 from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There's four categories: Best Classic, Best Exotic, Best Custom, and Best in Show. And if anyone would like to bring their car, there's a registration link on the junior class Instagram, which is @BurbankHSClassOf24 in their bio section, as well as the flyers handed out. There's a QR code on there, and you could turn in the physical flyers as well. Anyone can sign up, even if you're not a student and even if you don't live in Burbank, so we encourage everybody to bring their cars and have a little event to show them off. Pre-registration fees are $20, and registration at the door is $30. I hope to see you all there, and if you have a cool car, we would love to see participation from even our Board members. You can come. That same night, our junior class is also hosting their annual skate night at Moonlight World away. In senior news, our grad night date was announced, and tickets were sold from February 14, and they ended on the 22nd. And I'm glad to announce that we sold out with a count of 450 tickets. In other news, our prom location and theme has also been announced for this year. Our prom will be on May 13 from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Skirball Cultural Center, and the theme is A Night at the Casino Royale. The week of -- March 13 to March 17 is Wellness Week. The Student Mental Health Board is teaming up with ASB to host a spirit week centered around mental health and wellness. So the themes of the days include emotional, physical, social media, educational, and environmental wellness. Though there will be an activity at lunch each of the days along with the spirit days, and some of the activities will include a movie night, a basketball contest, music in the quad, and an environmental cleanup. So it's not really a concern, but another reoccurring question among the students at Burbank High is the state of our pool. Our Burbank pool was shut down because of a crack in the cement along one of the sides. The pool was closed when I was a freshman in 2020 and was set to be fixed and completed by my senior year, 2023. So now that I'm a senior, I'm disheartened to see that our lovely aquatic program doesn't get to use the pool, and for some of our juniors, they might graduate without ever getting to be in it. I used to play water polo, so I've been in the pool, but unfortunately, after I left, again, the pool got shut down. So not to mention that our pool used to be used for a lot of tournaments, some that we didn't even participate in, so it was a lovely way for the aquatic program to fundraise and keep their funds up since they're one of the lower-funded programs. So that's just a concern with that. And other than that, Burbank High is doing its best to survive these unusually cold temperatures, snow included, and always remember that it's great to be a bulldog. Any questions?
Before you leave, let's get an answer on the pool question and what is happening there.
I appreciate you raising the concern, and we are working on that. We had to work with an architecture firm and then submit plans to the state. It's called the Division of State Architects. They need to review the plan. It takes -- it's a long process. They have a lot of plans that they review, so that's the delay. But we've had budgets set aside, we have the plans submitted, and we're waiting for that approval, and then we can start working on the pool.
If I can ask that we -- that staff send a letter, I'll join on signing that to our state delegation, legislative delegation, to the DSA to potentially move that faster, because that is delaying.
And then just one last update. On the Burbank High website, you'll see a tab that's called Construction, and that's where we're posting updates for the pool. So anybody at the community or students that want to get updates or see it there.
Thank you. So we'll update you when the letter goes out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to John Burrows High School, Mr. Everhuerta.
Obviously, Burrows is in the house tonight. Let's give it up for our softball team. Good evening, President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, school board members, Superintendent Hill, district staff, and amazing Burbank community here and at home. I hope you all are doing well and are staying warm in these unprecedented temperatures. At Burrows, we were having fun acting like five-year-olds running in the snow. I'm happy and excited to share all the things that are currently going down here at Burrows. We are happy to announce the end of our Light the Night fundraiser, ending where we fundraised a total of around $500. Congratulations to Ms. Hall's class, who raised over $200 and will be the winner of our pizza party this year. ASB held our Clubs President meeting, in which we shared information for our annual spring food festival, in which clubs will be able to participate, to sell snacks, foods to our students. So obviously, we have our softball team, if they are interested in fundraising. Yes, they do. As well, many of the clubs gearing up for the next school year, many have started holding their informational meetings on how students can get involved and participated in our school community, and such as students to be able to check out different interests that they have. We are excited that tomorrow we will be having our big prom reveal, and I was supposed to give you the inside scoop, but we have Burrows peeps here, so I will keep you waiting for tomorrow. And as said, yeah, as I said previously, the location of our prom will be at The Odyssey, and at the next school board meeting, I will promise what the theme is. A huge congratulations to our amazing VMA, who did an amazing job on their annual pop show this year, which the theme was Making Your Dreams Come True, taking inspiration by the infamous Holly Note song. I would give you a demonstration, but I am definitely not our choir. It's so amazing to see all these students find an avenue to share their different talents and be able to have that area of self-expression and pathway at Burrows. My personal favorite set of the night was Fly As Me by our special group, Men at Work, so a huge congrats on them. In the world of ASB, we're excited to have our annual kindness week from the week of March 6 to March 10, with the theme being cartoons. Monday will be Dora the Explorer. Explore your kindness by wearing your tourist gear. Tuesday is SpongeBob. Dive deep into your kindness by wearing tropical gear. Wednesday is Backyardigans. Team up kindness by dressing up with your squad. Thursday, Bob the Builder. Build up your kindness by wearing your future career attire. And Friday, Clifford the Big Red Dog by going big on kindness by wearing your best Burrows gear or your Kindness Week shirts. The following week, ASB will also be proud to be partnering up with our Student Mental Health Board, where students will be able to participate, to learn, and get tips on how to better help their mental health and get tips on managing different stress levels. Tomorrow, our amazing IMA will be hosting their annual sing night, which will be starting at 7:00, so come down, enjoy some amazing jazz music, and bust us some moves. If you'd also are interested, they are still looking for volunteers, so if that is something you're interested in volunteering, please let me know, and I will gladly send you the link. I'll also be volunteering, so I wouldn't mind some company as well. Moving into the world of sports, we continue to wish all our spring sports the best of luck in their season, especially to our volleyball boys, who have their first home game of the season tomorrow. Now, I also want to give a shout-out to extraordinary students and accomplishments here at John Burrows High School. A huge congratulations to Mia Torano, who was recognized for all CIF SS and traditional competitive cheer. Another shout-out to our PBIS Student of the Month, Aiden Weiss, Dylan Nutson, Aiden Rodas, Lois Clerk, Susanna Alvarez, and myself, Everhuerta. On March 9, we will also be having our open house, and would love to have some of you all to come out. I am working with our admin on scheduling an amazing tour with you guys, so please stay tuned to that, but if you would like to get a sneak peek at Burrows, come down to Open House. And moving on to student concerns, obviously, we have our amazing softball team, and as I've mentioned previously in previous reports of our softball program. So obviously, our softball program has to go off-campus to Olive Park to play on their field. They have to use other resources, such as different schedules with our weight room, and then also the availability of our students having to keep their -- all their -- what's it called? Their gear, yes. Watch me blank. All their amazing gear, especially with students, some of them having to have it in their car, and that, especially with all the gear being so expensive, at times, they don't want to run that risk of it being robbed. So definitely, if we can look into how can we better improve our softball, I mean, we have our baseball field, maybe how we could use that, using our weight rooms, see where we can keep this gear that our students invest their hard-own money that they have, and especially the parents, and we make sure they don't want to put that away and lose that. And then in other, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Hill, Mr. Kempel, and Mr. Maxwell, who have been working on our gym. Thank you for the update, Dr. Weisberg, on seeing that. So as those who don't know, our gym has had a little bit of a problem, first with the floors and then with our ceiling. Obviously, with the rain, the ceiling, there has been leaks, and thankfully, you know, we're getting -- we got a plan of what will that replacement be, so we're happy to have all of that, especially since our PE classes, our different sports, use that for training, and especially when we were giving a tour, and we see a baseball having to clean up the wet gym floors to make sure they don't slip while they're practicing. So thank you for doing all of that, and again, we're excited to have our gym finally open, now without seeing rain in the forecast, to have their home games. Any questions?
First, thank you. A lot there. So we do have some public comment cards on this issue, so I want to make sure we get to that, so I'll ask that we respond after that. Okey-dokey. With baseball mopping the floor to make sure they don't slip, that should be staff. So if we can touch base on that front, I don't think that -- I don't want our teams doing that. So thank you for highlighting that issue, and we'll continue to hear more from the girls and the ladies on this softball issue, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, we will move to item 10, which is requests to address the Board, by far our most popular item in the night. We'll begin with public communications. I'm going to begin with those who have indicated that they are speaking on agenda items first. With that, we will start with Dr. Tom Crowther.
Good evening, Board President Ferguson and members cabinet. My name is Tom Crowther. I am a Burbank resident since 1986, a former BOSD student, teacher, coach, assistant principal and principal. Professionally, I'm now a director, curriculum instruction, in a charter organization, but I remain a BOSD parent of two, one a student at Delora Swartam Middle School and one at McKinley Elementary. I'm here tonight in regards to Agenda Item 13E and 13F, the proposed job descriptions for two director positions. You could add to that 131 and 13K, because broadly, my concerns are the one-time use of funds to create positions at a time where programs with direct impact on the students and families continue to be cut and/or the financial burden of maintaining them fall to families. In November of '22, leadership surveyed stakeholders for input as to how to prioritize spending two sources of one-time money from the state. Was this merely a box check? What do those results show? Restoring the Director of HR position was the lowest-ranked priority amongst all surveyed items, with only 8.5% ranking it high and 43% ranking it a low priority. Restoring it's also misleading, because over the years, the district currently has an Assistant Superintendent of HR and has only had both positions concurrently for brief windows in recent history. The Director of DEI and Secondary Ed also surveyed low, with only 11%, saying it was a high priority, and 45% ranking it a low priority. These positions are unpopular with the Budget Advisory Committee as well. Are you okay with these views being dismissed? Because here we are this evening with job descriptions here we are this evening, with job descriptions on the agenda, inevitably approved, using one-time funds, and likely filled in the near future. In fact, there are already rumors circulating in the school communities as to who these positions are going to be filled by. As a general rule, I think Mr. Campbell would agree, it's dangerous business practice to allocate one-time funds to creating positions or funding positions, but some are more essential than others. Unfreezing a teaching position, an art position at Luther, or an AP position, two things that should have never been cut, makes perfect sense. Adding one at Murrell when there is growth, an AP position at Murrell when there's growth, makes perfect sense. The proposed director positions make less. Each comes at a cost of just under $200,000 annually. They were not identified as priorities by your community, evidenced by the data that was shared with you at prior board meeting. They aren't going to have a direct impact at the site or student level. They will only provide support at the cabinet level, many of whom have time during the day for leisurely lunches, posting on their dog's social media accounts, or going to the gym. At the same time, their classified positions being unfilled, reduced, eliminated, infant pair programs closing, a fee increase for the Run the Bell program, and your high school athletic programs are being cut off at the knees. When I started as a student at Burrows in 1992, the athletic transportation budget was over $100,000. By the time I was a senior, it was $90,000. By the time I was a head coach in the early 2000s, that budget had been cut to $43,000. The man you honored this evening, AP Principal, Assistant Principal Gutsen, was tasked with sharing this news with the coaches, and then we had to share with our families. A lot has changed over the years. You know what has not? That athletic budget. That athletic transportation budget remains $43,000. It hasn't moved in over 25 years. That doesn't come close to meeting the needs. As you know, gas prices have quadrupled, the bus companies pass this on to the customers, your athletic programs. It costs thousands of dollars a year for these programs, and to offset this burden, small programs sometimes resort to renting vans, which coaches drive, carpooling with parents, 18-year-olds occasionally drive themselves to games, which is a huge liability, and the district refuses to support these programs financially. Additionally, the programs are not able to fundraise the same way my programs used to, because the rules have changed, and the district wants no semblance for pay-to-play, which I understand. It gets worse, because recently, some of these same programs have been told they're now responsible for paying for the cost of their officials for non-league games.
Your time is up.
I don't think that was five minutes, but I respectfully will accept that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Crowther. Our next speaker, thank you everybody. Appreciate the enthusiasm, appreciate the points. We have a ton of speakers tonight. I want to get everybody home. So if you can help me, we can do a quick collapse, and then we can move forward. I want to hear from all of our students and get you guys home as well. To Delaney Perez, and if I mispronounce a name, please correct me.
Yes, me.
Come on up. It's your time, followed by Rochelle Shipstead.
Okay. I don't know how to formally address you guys, so I'll just say respectfully to all the members here.
No problem.
I'm here to advocate on behalf of Señora Coronado. My son is currently in her kindergarten dual-emergent class at McKinley Elementary. I myself attended McKinley Elementary from kinder through fifth grade, and was even the vice president of the school at one point. I feel thrilled to be living in a city where my own children can learn in the same building that I did. There are only a handful of extra special teachers that one remembers after school ends. I'm confident that Señora Coronado's name will be remembered in our household for years to come, because she is such a special teacher, with a huge heart. She identified that my son needed extra time/tutoring in the beginning of the year, along with a handful of other students, and she stayed unpaid for an hour extra for school for three days a week, to work specifically with this group of students for three weeks. My son is doing quite well because of her guidance. For Señora Coronado to identify that the children needed extra help, and also offer her services free of charge, just out of the love of her profession, is such a kindness that teachers lack nowadays. I understand that there's only a certain amount of money available, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the precious resource of time. Señora Coronado is a superb teacher. She makes her own videos and shares them with the class about numbers and shapes, and is always ready to give any help that she can to guide our children through this new language. She handed out homemade practice/tutoring kits to each family last semester, along with instruction on videos on how to play/learn with the resources. These extra resources really benefited our household, especially since all the comparable resources on Amazon, for example, are outrageously priced. I wouldn't even know where to begin. It's a resource that she paid for out of pocket, because she's blessed to do so. This semester, we received another updated packet and continue to play and learn at home. Sadly, I'm at this meeting because it's come to my attention that Señora Coronado's contract will not be renewed for next year. This breaks my heart. How could our community turn a blind eye to the magical work she's doing with our children? Having to teach five- and six-year-olds is hard enough in English, and she makes it magical in another language. I believe the DI kinder is the hardest year for our program. Why wouldn't our community want to rally behind one of its hardest-working DI teachers that I have personally met? As background, my eldest son is currently in the DI program as an eighth grader at Huerta, so I have gone through and met several of the DI teachers in our district. Unfortunately, when my eldest son was at McKinley, there was also a problem with the kindergarten teacher, and she left, and there were several replacements for the rest of the year. This happened again two years ago. I don't understand how this problem has not been resolved. Needless to say, that the matter can be resolved by keeping Señora Coronado as the DI kinder teacher and renewing her contract next year. Now, I'm not going to pretend to know who makes these decisions, or what happens, or if it's principal favorites or something like that, but just to let you know, we found out about it as parents literally today, like at noon, and I'll have you know that a third of the class's parents are here today in the audience to advocate on behalf of our teacher. So in closing, as a parent member of our community and lifelong Burbankian, I had to come out and advocate on Señora Coronado's behalf. I believe that the board or whoever is making this decision is making a mistake, and she's the gem, and we should treat her as such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Shipstead, followed by Kathy Will Sarna.
Okay.
Good to see you.
Good to see all of you. Good evening. Well, I, my name is Rochelle Shipstead, and I've taught in this district for 30 years in August. I've been at Roosevelt Elementary School the entire time. Our school is a collaborative learning center, and that means that we don't teach, just for the general public, that we don't teach special ed the old-school way, you know, K, first and second in one room, and third, fourth, and fifth in another. I also get the most extreme children with either behaviors or cognitive problems, and I have the most children with SAI minutes. So I got this beautiful letter, which Peter got, and Vanessa Norrington got, and my principal, Matt Osman, got. I'm just going to brief, like, read a little bit of it, but this child, Canyon David, his family said, I can talk about him. He wasn't even able to walk before he came into kindergarten, and they didn't think he could even see. And he's one of two children that I found out in August that did not have aid. I had no aids for this child and one other student in my class transferring from seed. And this parent said, this year, with Ms. Polino, who's the special ed teacher at Roosevelt, Julie Polino, and Mrs. Shipstead, has been life-changing for my son and our family. We just had his annual IEP and are blown away at his progress, academic and social. The advancements at home as well are beyond belief. His future is now looking brighter and more hopeful. He's doing things never imagined possible. He's talking, having meaningful conversations. He has friends. He had his actual first birthday party ever, and it was with the class that I have. He's writing and sounding out words. He is an all-around new, improved boy. Mrs. Polino and Mrs. Shipstead discovered this person we didn't even know existed. Now, this is what education is supposed to be about. And what bothers me so much is that I go to school almost, I swear to God, almost every day, and I don't have a sub-aid in my classroom. So I have children that are very, very dangerous to themselves and to others with no aid. It took three months for two of my very best one-on-one aides, DTTs, to be hired by HR. Three months. And you guys go to private services, and they get hired in like, a month. And I know that for a fact. I have dates on when these people were interviewed by Vanessa, when they did everything, and then comparing that to a private service aide. And that is just not okay. I'm sorry. It's not okay. I have had high blood pressure. I have had blood vessels breaking in my eyes. The first two weeks of school, the first three months of school, was extremely dangerous. And I don't know what it's going to take for all of you to actually get your spending priorities correct. We always hear, we do not have enough money for an aide. Julie Polino is one of the best special ed teachers I have taught with in 30 years, and she has been asking for one more special aid instructional aid in her classroom, and she hasn't gotten it. I know I've asked you face-to-face why, and you don't know why. Other people tell me it's money, and it's just not right. I just don't understand what's going to happen. I am serious. These children will run out of gate and get hit by a car. I have children that don't speak. They're echolalic. They just repeat what you say to them. And they have no self-awareness, and they have been found in other parts of our school. I have 24 students and not enough people to take care of them. And it's my burden, and it's very stressful. I am an excellent teacher, and I don't believe any of you have come to my class for 20 minutes, not even 20 minutes, to see me teach. Not one. And I've asked you. I have emailed you. You have popped your head in my classroom, Matt, and I've said, please don't go, please stay. I wish you would come and see my room. I have purchased a gym for my classroom. I have a full, I have two bikes, I have a stepping machine, I have jumpers, I have Bosu balls. My children are being educated completely, every way, socially, emotionally, and academically, that I have children like this, that nobody even knew they could read, that are reading now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Will Sarna, followed by Guadalupe Coronado.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. My name is Kathy Will Sarna, and the first thing I'd like to do is read a letter that was written by three staff members at Bret Hart Elementary, Karen Lombardo, Anna Lett, and Linda Liu. And we had a great meeting together with all, we invited 11 sites to come, and nine of the 11 elementary sites came to talk about TK and kindergarten. So this is what they would like to share. In regards to the extended kindergarten and matching the TK hours, we at Bret Hart strongly disagree, and we don't support this proposal, and here are the reasons stated below. Number one, a TK has an aide for their time, and we at kindergarten do not, so extending our day, we would like to request an aide to make it equitable. Number two, logistics of having to share our kindergarten yard with potentially five different classes, all having recess and lunch, is not feasible all at the same time. Our lunch tables and playground equipment and our big yard are only for six-year-olds and up, so again, not feasible for the kinders and the TKs in their young age. The state wants TK to be a free childcare and preschool for all. We have fought for years to let it be known that kindergarten is not free childcare, and kindergarten is now very academic. We are now teaching what used to be taught in first grade. Many of our students already have a difficult time with our strong academic program, so adding more to their day is not going to help with this. Kindergarten, by the way, is not even a state-required grade at this point. We teach with divided opening at our school at Bret Hart, and we are not willing to give this up, which would make us teach longer if we kept our divided day than any other grade level, and then would reduce our planning time, which is crucial for what we teach. We may be finishing with our students at 1:00 or 1:30, but we rarely leave at our contract hours, and a lot of times, our lunch is at the end of our day, so that we can pack all our academics into the morning, when they are fresh. Our student population does not allow us to receive Title I funds at Bret Hart, so we don't need to supply lunchtime for our kinders either, which is the main time that it seems to be added for the additional five-hour day. And finally, the whole TK program does not do what it's supposed to do, that it's based solely on age. It is called transitional kindergarten, because this is a program to transition students to kindergarten, who are not ready for it yet. However, there are TK students right now who are ready for kindergarten, and then there are five-year-olds who are not ready for kindergarten. So to make this program work, all TK and kinder students should be tested in the first few weeks of school, and those in TK who are ready for kinder, and those in kinder who are not, should change places. There should be some fluid ability for teachers to have some fluid. Some administrators, like mine, has allowed us to move kids from up to down and down to up, but other sites that we talked to at this meeting with all of us, that is, it's a line in the sand, and it's you're here or you're there. So it should not be solely, according to, this is our Bret Hart, based solely on age, especially since neither TK or kinder are required grades statewide. So that is what I would like to share from those three teachers at Bret Hart, who could not be here. I would like to add a couple of minutes to that and just say that, you know, I've been teaching 35 years. I started in high school, then I taught five years at John Muir Middle School, so I've been from the top down to middle school, and now I've been 24 years at kindergarten. I'm not afraid to speak. I've spoken in private one-on-ones. This isn't my favorite forum, but maybe I'll feel like I'm heard. A couple of my concerns, personal concerns and Roosevelt concerns, is I would like from the board, I've emailed twice this year, starting at the beginning of the year, and only heard back from one of you. And I know you're busy. I'm busy too, but I took the time to write, and nobody answered me except for one of you. And I just think that all you need to do is say, "Got it, thanks," to let me know that you actually read what I said. If you collectively discuss Kathy Will's email, then let me know that you all read it and you're going to get on it. But to be ignored is really unacceptable for me. I don't ignore my parents. I'm required to answer within a 24-hour period of time, and if I take the time to email you, it probably is important, because I'm really busy, and just to bother to do it, it just feels really disrespectful. Second thing is there's huge staffing issues. We've talked about it with my administrator, custodians, instructional assistants, like Mrs. Shipstead said. There are huge behavior problems in rooms, and I just think, you know, the lady, the teacher had no, she had three aides down today. Do you think she taught anything today? No. Do you think those kids got their legal, binded-on-paper minutes? No. That's a liability to you all, that they're not getting their minutes. So we need to fix that and figure out how to fix that. Yard supervisors, that's a huge safety issue. When you have one person supervising 75 five-year-olds, that's an issue. So I hope you get on that and the custodian issues, because I'm really tired of vacuuming my room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Guadalupe Coronado, followed by Abraham.
Grosswasser.
Grosswasser, thank you. Apologies. Go ahead.
Dear board members, other members, members of the community, and my wonderful parents here tonight. And on line two. My name is Guadalupe Coronado. I am presently working at McKinley Elementary, teaching in a dual-immersion Spanish kindergarten classroom. I want to express my gratitude for this opportunity to serve in this fine community. This is my second year here, and in the beginning of February of this year, I was told that I would not be re-elected or not given a contract for the next school year, 2023, 2024. It was suggested at that time that I resigned, so that my record wouldn't show that I was being fired or let go. I felt it was wrong for me to do this, to follow this request, because it doesn't reflect who I am as an educator. For the past two years, I have worked in a hostel, working environment. Nevertheless, I have continued to be the educator that I have always been, regardless of how I've been treated. I know that I have also continued to make a difference in my students' education here at McKinley, and this could be verified by reviewing my students' report cards. Also, because I believe that every child has potential to learn, I have provided tutoring sessions, starting in September through April, for free, for the past one and a half years, and I did the same for my other three districts that I have worked for before. During my career as an educator, I have worked for three other different school districts and have been tenured in all of them. I was entrusted to open two new schools in the Fresno area, and one was a dual-immersion school. In my first district, I worked 17 years, and I was awarded Teacher of the Year in 1995 for Parlayer Unified School District, and also received two awards given by Active Mothers Association in education. I would appreciate it if you would check my track record before coming to this district. Unfortunately, I apologize. Unfortunately, I had to leave my first Unfortunately, I had to leave my first district due to searching for services and special education for my daughter who has high-functioning autism. And then I had to relocate one more time here to Burbank in order to support my daughter, who is pursuing a career in the film industry. What a life, huh? Moving around so much. That was not my first choice. I would have stayed very happily in my first district, but that didn't happen. During this past one and a half years here at Burbank, I have worked arduously to provide a high-quality education for all my students, and have also spent numerous hours outside my normal duty hours and during my vacation time. On a daily basis, I arrive at school at 6:30, and I leave between 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. And I'm here, and I'm there every other weekend to make sure my classroom is clean and I am ready for the week. To conclude, I would like to state that I am passionate about what I do because of the positive results that I see in my students when they bloom in all aspects of acquiring the Spanish language. Thank you for allowing me to share how I feel and what role I have played during these past 26 years in this important field of education now and in the past. Thank you, and good evening.
Our next speaker is Mr. Grosswasser, followed by Carla Rodriguez.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Abraham Grosswasser. My son Jacob is a dual-immersion kindergarten student at William McKinley. He's in Senora Coronado's class. My son was in TK at McKinley and also went to preschool at our synagogue, and we're very excited that our homeschool here in Burbank offered dual immersion, but we're also quite nervous, because my wife and I are not Spanish speakers, and Ms. Coronado has helped squash our concerns and created an environment where Jacob has both thrived academically, but, you know, his reading, his math skills are developing at such a fast pace, and his Spanish vocabulary and his reading and pronunciation are very impressive, and, you know, she tells us far beyond, you know, because we're not native Spanish speakers and can't really help him with his pronunciation and reading. Senora Coronado has created a nurturing safe space for her students, and, you know, they've continued to meet all the challenges in learning a dual-immersion setting, and several of our families have kids who are older and also other dual-immersion programs at McKinley or later in. Several of the other parents have kids who are also in dual immersion, whose kids are in second, third, and fourth grade and such, and they've identified and said how lucky we are, because Senora Coronado has gone far and above, you know, offering her time and also a lot of resources and a lot of emails and, you know, videos and things. I'm here tonight mostly because I learned that Senora Coronado's contract was not going to be renewed. I feel like this is very upsetting, because I believe she's not disqualified, but she's consistently gone above and beyond, ensuring that her students are reaching academic benchmarks, and also Spanish-speaking reading skills, and navigating the social interactions and emotions of being in kindergarten. I'm 46 years old. I only remember two names of my elementary school teachers. One of them was Miss Sunshine. She was my kindergarten teacher. The impact these teachers have is very important. Jacob talks about Senora Coronado all the time, and, you know, it's very special that he has that, you know, gets that impact that she's had. And so I don't understand, just like Delmi had said, you know, who makes these decisions, but I can, you know, would urge whoever is involved, the board or the school district, to reconsider as, you know, don't rob anybody of having, you know, the experience I've had where, you know, Miss Sunshine is still someone's name I can remember, just because it's important. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carla Rodriguez, followed by Kristin Amber Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carla Rodriguez, and my daughter Claudia Rodriguez attends dual-immersion program at McKinley Elementary, and she is in Senora Coronado's kinder class. When I learned of such a program, I was excited to sign up my daughter. Once we met Senora Coronado, I instantly knew that this was going to be an amazing experience for her. Senora Coronado proved it. It has been one-of-a-kind experience. She goes above and beyond her job to make sure that every child has what they need. Like stated before, she made every child in her class a practice/tutoring kits, that they had everything you can imagine. She handmade every single one for each student, something I've never had another teacher do. And I have two older kids who attended school in Burbank, and now, not one of my children ever had a teacher that would go above and beyond like she does. Senora Coronado truly cares for my little one. She feels completely safe. She talks about her all the time. She loves the videos that she personally makes and sends us. She constantly checks on, to make sure Claudia's doing well, and if there's anything that she needs to help, to help her extra at home, you know, extra practice pages, materials, et cetera, and even offers to help her after school. These are the type of teachers that we need to have in schools, teachers that genuinely care and actually love their job. I ask that you truly reconsider keeping Senora Coronado. Losing her would be a huge mistake for our kids and the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Amber Thomas, followed by Nina Allen.
All right. I don't have anything planned, but my name is Kristin Amber Thomas, so I want to introduce myself as the granddaughter of a man that worked as a custodian at Burbank High School for 38 years tirelessly, a mother that spent over two decades coaching in the school district. And you might recognize me from my daughter that stood up here from OSS, pretty little blonde thing that stood up here and was like, bring back OSS. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I'm here today, I think we're addressing 13C, which is the superintendent, which I view as a leadership position when it comes to the funding. And I'm going to segue off of Tom Crowther really quick, because cut-off at the knees for the sports program was exactly where I wanted to go. All right? That is exactly everything I've been thinking, I've been feeling for these girls that I've been seeing. I'm not going to put this lightly, because it's not fun to watch as a coach. I coached at Burbank High School four years. I loved my kids up there. I'm now at Burrows. I love my kids down here. And I am watching the softball team, like pack mules going up to Machu Picchu, make their way from Burrows all the way over to Olive every single day. Now, I know building the facility of a softball field is, that's going to be a difficult thing to navigate. We cannot watch young women degraded, walk over without dignity, without the proper use of facility. We cannot have that. I cannot watch that. I mean, a little bit of backstory, all of my friends didn't make the high school team for Burrows, so they all played water polo, and they were awesome there. So to hear you stand up and talk about water polo like that, too, something I really want to highlight is, some of their funding comes from that pool that's fixed. That's how they support their program, is by hosting youth tournaments, clinics, maybe even workshops, charging $30 to get in the pool and having kids work at their sport. And we don't need to go into the reason that children play sports. All right? It speaks for itself. They need it. I coach at the JV level. I do that intentionally, because, in my opinion, those are the kiddos that need it. So I want to speak on behalf of the entire program, though, when I say, they need better care. And I wasn't aware of the water polo issue. You need better care. That water polo team needs better care. There needs to be a better job done for the students right now. I'm standing up here to advocate them, as I watch them haul back and forth. Transportation, I'm filling up a Suburban right now. I'm filling up a Suburban to take kids from point A to point B, so we can get them there. All right? The transportation budget, that's a huge thing. So the more I'm digging deeper into this, and the more I'm seeing with it, I mean, where's the leadership? We're going to create new positions. We're going to create things. We're going to create more jobs. We're going to pay superintendents more. But let's talk about what leadership does, because my girls aren't getting helmets, and I haven't talked to Sheila about this yet, but my paycheck is about to buy helmets. My paycheck's about to go into buying NOXY-certified concussion protocol-registered helmets for my kids, because seeing their faces today when they didn't get them wasn't worth it for me. When you see girls who are working, as hard as I work them, not get the basic means of care, and the standard of care an athlete should get, boy or girl, woman or female, whatever.
I need you to wrap your comments. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm feisty today. I'm feisty today.
It's all good.
Thank you for listening. Some of these kids are going to talk. Nicole's going to get up and talk. Please listen.
Thank you.
Please listen. Thank you.
And please know, I don't mean to be disrespectful. We do have to just keep it equitable for everybody, but I appreciate you. Thank you for coming down. Next speaker is Nina Allen, followed by Michelle Sandoval Rosario.
I've never really done this before, but good evening. I am also addressing 13C about the Burrows softball team. In 1972, Congress passed a law called Title IX, this law that prohibits sex-based discrimination in any school or any other education program that receives funding from the federal government. This means that everyone needs to have the same funding, the same foundation and advantages. If something is provided for boys, in this case, funding, it means being provided for the girls as well. For what reason is John Burrows' girls' softball exempt from this law? I am a JV Burrows softball player. I believe that we should have basic-level requirements for high-school sports teams. Every day, I get out of class at 2:33, grab my bag from one of our school health classrooms, and change in the girls' bathroom, along with all the other softball girls, while other girls are coming in and out of the bathroom during passing period, while people are walking through the halls. The rest of my team and I then walk five blocks to Olive Park for our practice. We do fundraisers to get our practice jerseys, our visors, our playing jerseys, and our Burrows softball sweats. For other games, since we don't have funded form of transportation, such as a bus, our parents or guardians have to drive us. Most of our parents are working during the days that we have games. This causes us to have to go along with other parents or our coaches, such as my coach Kristin has just stated. This causes us to have to go through a complicated process for us to get to our games. If the Burbank district would at least fund transportation and maybe even an on-campus field, it would 100% make it easier and more efficient for our Burrows softball team. And most of the softball sports at John Burrows High School is already being funded by the school district. Almost all of the sports have their own playing area. Football and soccer have their own field. Track has their own track field. Tennis has their own courts. Baseball has their own field. Water polo and swim have their own pool. Basketball has two gyms, along with volleyball. Just about all of our sports teams have their own playing area and is funded by the school. There shouldn't be any reason why our softball team shouldn't be funded and have their own field on campus. If our district is willing to give raises to their own representatives, then why shouldn't John Burrows softball team be funded? The law in Congress passed aren't just words on paper. It's a law that was meant to create equality for our female athletes. Lastly, I'd like to thank that we have made progress since 1972. Thank you.
So, before you begin, please, what we are trying to do is facilitate a civil dialogue, and that involves you getting five minutes of time to come and to speak, not yelling out. That's not the example we set for our young people, and I'm going to ask for your help with that. So we will give everybody five minutes of time, and then we will respond, but I need your help keeping this a civilized meeting. Please go ahead. Our next speaker, following Ms. Sandoval Rosario, is Amalia Hernandez. Thank you. Please move forward. Okay. Excuse me. I'm sorry. This gentleman in the green shirt is choosing to continue to be disruptive and now to delay your time. So this is the first warning I'm giving you. The next warning, well, I will ask the superintendent to escort you from the room. So please, do not disrupt anybody else's time or their constitutionally-protected right to speak at this meeting. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Michelle Sandoval Rosario, and I am here as a concerned parent and a resident who grew up in Burbank and went through the school district. I have a son who is currently in the kindergarten dual-immersion program at McKinley Elementary School with Senora Guadalupe Coronado. My family and I are disappointed to hear Senora Coronado, a fantastic and outstanding teacher, has been asked to step down. I have witnessed firsthand, while volunteering in her class once a week, the excellent work she has done, despite how difficult it is with more than 50% of the children from non-speaking Spanish families. Our family is disappointed that no one reached out to any of the parents to assist her capabilities. There was no assessment. I'm a researcher, and there was no assessment, no evaluation, nothing from anyone. Senora Guadalupe Coronado is a high-quality teacher for a high-demand program. She is an invested teacher who has made learning a dual-language fun for children, and these are five six-year-olds. An invested teacher who works with students beyond the classroom, as you heard, and a teacher who helps parents learn how to complement learning at home with learning tools and not just books and handsouts. And I have two questions for the board. Number one, what is the long-term sustainability of the program if you relieve quality teachers like Senora Coronado? And number two, how will the school district make the investment to keep quality teachers? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amalia Hernandez, followed by Nicole Jerebeke. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Hill, and district administrators. My name is Dr. Amalia Hernandez. She/her. I have been a speech pathologist in Burbank for the last three years, and I have been an educator for almost 20 years. We have a crisis here in Burbank when it comes to our special education program. We have been without set leadership for almost a year. We've seen an increase in caseloads due to increased needs and behaviors throughout the district. At my site specifically, Bret Hart Elementary, we are at almost 25% students with special needs. That means one in four students require specialized services, specialized classes, and most importantly, lots of IEP meetings. Our caseloads are unwieldy. We need time to do our job well. We are case managers and special education teachers. We are case managers and speech-language pathologists. We need time to do our job well. My special education teacher colleagues are balancing training staff, managing student behaviors, and schedules, preparing and attending IEP meetings, collaboration with general education and related service providers, in addition to, you know, teaching. We need time to do our job well. As speech-language pathologists, we manage caseloads of 55 or more students. We have students with multiple contacts during the week, like two-plus hours, and they count the same as a student with 30 minutes a week. If a child is nonverbal and uses an AAC device to communicate, we're responsible for training parents and staff. We have to program and maintain the devices, all of this beyond face-to-face therapy time with the students. For every hour of therapy, on average, we spend two to three hours of preparation, documentation, attending meetings, collaboration. We need time. So tomorrow, when you go to the table, please, please accept BTA's proposed revisions for Article 31 to give us the time that we need to do our job well. Thank you.
Thank you. And apologies for not referring to you as doctor. So anyway, thank you. Mr. Beke.
Good evening, President Ferguson, members of the board, Dr. Hill, members of the district and staff. My name is Nicole Jerebeke. I am the BTA Vice President, a PE teacher at Dolores Huerta Middle School, and I have been teaching for 20 years. I would like to tell you about the raises other school districts have received for the 2022-23 school year. Roland, 7% on, 5% off. Chafferty, 10% on. Mountain View, 10% on. Pomona, 8% on, 2% off. Azusa, 11.5 on. Downey, 10% on. El Monte, 10%. El Wanda, 10%. Glendora, 8%. Ontario Montclair, 10.25 on and 8% off. Palmdale, 7.25 on. Paramount, 11.5 on. West Covina, 7% on. Norwalk La Marada, 11% on. Pasadena, 10% on. Las Virginas, 8% on. Mason Union, 9.75 on. Ocean View, 9% and 4% off. Santa Paula, 9% on. Simi Valley, 11% on. Ventura, certificated in ESP, 10% and 2% off. And Rio, 9% on. These types of double-digit raises are what keeps educators working in their school districts. The answer to recruiting and retaining your employees is to pay them a fair wage. When I first came to BUSD in 2007, I was paying $170 for a two-party PPO per month. Today, in 2023, I am paying $1,157 for my PPO. Our members cannot continue Our members cannot continue to afford to work here if the healthcare cap is not increasing. We have lost members to Santa Clarita, New Hall, Glendale, La Quinada. All of us in this room know of members who have left us. Although we love our students and our community, it is hard to continue to stay here when you're underpaying for salary and benefits. We deserve the right to make a decent wage. We deserve the right to have money to invest in a 403B, a 401K, an IRA, a Roth, a mutual fund, and invest in stocks. Unfortunately, our members live paycheck to paycheck, and we have members who have been renters their whole careers. I want BUSD to be the place that future educators want to live and grow. Please agree to BTA's proposals March 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next speaker is Katie Tay. Thank you, followed by Manny Travieso?
Close enough.
Close enough. I apologize. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Taykes. I'm the Associate Head Coach for John Burrows High School softball.
If I could interrupt you for two seconds, can we halt her, or restart her time? I have two other cards with you, Doug Nichol, as well as Juliana Barrios, as well, if they want to join you as well at the podium.
We're supposed to go after.
Okay.
After, we just, after this tied in.
No problem. So I'll call you, restarting your time. Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you.
Hi, my name is Katie Taykes. I'm here, I have this letter written by Doug Nichol, he is our head coach, as he was willing to speaking. I'm saying this in regards to 13C. I've decided to write this email to all stakeholders of Burrows softball because, in all honesty, I have talked to all of you separately and felt support from all of you. But also, no action has been taken when following subjects have been mentioned or brought up. It has brought frustration, and it has been disheartening to our girls and parents in the softball program and to me personally. In the past year, several projects and topics have been brought up, and to this day, no answers or action. We are not asking much, just to be treated equally with other student athletes at Burrows and having, and having our requests granted that were discussed last year. While these are not perfect solutions, they are a good first step towards helping in the short, in the short term. Last year was our understanding that two duck-off fences were approved by a joint-use committee to be built at Olive Park, our home field. In fact, there was an actual start date that was relayed to me, and work was supposed to start before our season, only to find out that Larry Cross at BUSD didn't let the project start. This was embarrassing because I announced to our parents and players that the project was moving forward, and it never did. This was a project very much needed to protect our players warming up, as well as those in Burbank Park and Recreation. It's a year later and still no bullpens at Olive Park. Even though it was approved by those on the joint-use committee, it is frustrating that BUSD didn't allow it to continue. Fencing at Olive for our games. For years and years, this has been important to the girls in our program, as well as our parents. We are one of the only programs in CIF without a fence, and has always been in point and contention in our program. In August, I had a meeting with Providence High School, who wanted a partner to get a fence. I brought it up in a meeting in September and have not heard back since about it. This is a fence that requires nothing to be planted into the ground, just storage, which we will have in an open area next to Olive One. That area is not being used at all. We are still willing to partner with Providence in this and to share with them, but have not been given the go-ahead. Can you please get an answer to this all right away? Our season starts in a few weeks. Actually, it did already start, and we would like to use a fence. Liability should not be an issue, as well as all teams we play against have a fence, and Burbank Little League, which I was, which he was a part of, have approved use for fence for years. Storage at Olive. I've discussed with many a need for more storage at Olive Park. We have received approval from Diego, thank you Diego, for new storage, but with COVID happening and not many, as not, and not having as many fundraising opportunities because of it, we delayed putting in a new shed. Quite frankly, they're expensive, and we needed to raise the funds for a new shed in place of our old one. Regardless, the shed discussed is still too small for our needs. At this present time, there are multiple large storage units in the parking lot at Olive. I believe some may be for a Disney school. I would like to request we discuss possible storage solutions in addition to what we already have, and for the district and joint-use committee to consider funding them. Two years ago, I informed all those in Burbank Park and Rec and BUSD that I have a local business that wanted to donate a scoreboard to Olive for our girls' softball program, no strings attached. This is something else that is sorely needed as in, of this time, has never been discussed further, and topic just seemed to just disappear. As we all know, BUSD is not in compliance with Title IX, and everything I mention above are boys in the basketball, in the baseball program and Burrows currently have. In fact, the softball program at Burbank High School has everything that I pressed with above. They have fencing bullpen to separate the field from pitchers warming up, and they have fencing in the outfield. They have bigger storage unit containers, which is probably double in size than what we have, and they also have a scoreboard. The softball girls at Burrows, who work just as hard as any other athletes at Burrows, while not having any facilities or space on campus, are not being treated close to equality in regards to their counterparts at Burbank High School softball. I want everyone to know that I'm not holding anyone at Burbank Parks and Recreation Department responsible. In fact, Diego and his team have been nothing short of incredible and totally supportive of our program. They are a joy to work with and help a lot. They do as much for our program as they can, but they have also responsibilities in their own program that they need to take of, and I, we understand that. This is a Burbank US, this is a Burbank School District problem, and the failure to provide for our athletes in the softball program is laziness at best, and negligence is at worst on part of our BUSD and nobody else. It is our problem, but can only be, but can be easily fixed by those in charge with little effort and support. Doug Nichol has coached women's sports at Burrows since 1994 and the softball program since 2010. He has tried to be patient when he, while working with two different visions, goals, and missions. I read that wrong, I apologize. However, as I listen to my athletes and parents each day and see their passion and desire to fix their issues, I feel that, he feels that he has failed to support them and to be a voice in them getting to, getting the change that they deserve. Quite frankly, the student athletes in the Burrows softball program deserve better, and that is the purpose of this email. I encourage our young ladies to advocate themselves, and I will always support them in their desire, in their desire to be treated equally and with respect. This email is a first step and try to create that. I hope that, I hope those with the power to change, to create change and help our program will see the value in our program, and the young ladies to play in it and act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Doug Nichol, followed by Juliana Barrios.
Hello, everybody. I will just say, I know a lot of you. Thank you for hearing me out, and I think it's sad, I'm here about 13C. I think it's sad that a 57-year-old white man has to be here advocating for these incredible young women. National Women's History Month, that's what we're in right now. Last year, we were finishing the top four in the state. Our volleyball team was ranked 12th in the country. Our baseball team won CIF. These young ladies work extremely hard. Let me tell you what they don't get that everyone else gets. They do not get to practice six days a week like every single program at Burrows. We have a three-to-five block at Olive Park, and that's it. Three to five, we're done. We have to be off the field. In fact, last Friday, we were kicked off by a fifth-grade Toluca Lake team at 501. That's sad. They get to have a snack bar at games for six hours a night. We don't. We can't raise those funds, no revenue stream. They have locker rooms on campus and a space to call of their own. We don't. We have nowhere. We don't have one place on campus that we can call our own, even these girl, even though these girls work so hard. They can run tournaments and camps. If I want to do that, I have to give 50% of the money back to Burbank Parks. I understand, it's not their fault. This isn't us against Burbank Park and Rec. They need to get money out of it, too, but anyone at Burrows that runs a camp gets to keep it all for other sports. During the rain today, we practiced on the playground, excuse me, not the playground, in the parking lot. We practiced in the parking lot. One of the best teams in CIF practiced in the parking lot. Most walked to practice. A few weeks ago, there was a lockdown right by Burrows. When the lockdown happened, my girls were in transit to the, to the field, down Clark. There was a house on Clark that was in lockdown with an armed shooter that had robbed a liquor store down the street. No other student at Burrows had to deal with that. We did. I had to take the JV girls into the Olive Gym, who were already there and sheltered in place. Fundraising is so limited that we can't get proper transportation. We have to work and move mountains to get parents to drive. God bless our parents, we have great parents. The budget, like Mr. Crowther said, hasn't changed in 15 years. $43,000 for a bus 15 years ago that cost $249 to rent for four or five hours. This year, that same bus, Jose Vaillier told me before this meeting, is about $500. So the bus prices have more than doubled, and our budget has not moved one dime. Our girls sometimes feel like outsiders on campus because they don't have a place. They're not, sometimes they don't feel like they're part of the community of Burrows. So what do we do? We were willing, we need solutions. We're willing to work with you. We know the challenges of having an on-campus field. It's silly. Do I want one? Yeah, I want a softball field at Burrows. I want it. Do I understand it might be hard? Sure. I teach these girls every day. What's my main rule? Is that they are learning to be strong, independent, empowered women. And I'm not saying that up here in front of you. They will tell you. I say that to them all the time. I am so proud that they are advocating for themselves up here today, and we have several people from Burbank High softball team. I don't know her, and I am so proud of her and her mom for coming down here to stand with us. This is a softball issue at Burbank, as well as here. So what do we do? I was told last week now that any non-league games that we have, because our funds are so low, that they will no longer be funded. So now, I have to pay for umpires, I was told this last week, pay for umpires of non-league games. So that means basically the district doesn't pay for anything except 10 league games. That's it. No transportation, no umpires, nothing. We don't have any help. This is a problem that is for our district. Glendale, every Glendale team, when they play us, and that's a comparable district, will come in a bus. Every kid. The other coaches laugh at me when they see us roll up in cars. So I am friends with some of the people that are on here to get raises tonight. How much do you need? I mean, how much do you need? It's, they, besides the superintendent, they are the highest-paid people in the district. The highest-paid people in the district want to get $5,000, $6,000 more? You're taking from them. That's who you're taking from. You are forcing them so everyone can get their raises at the highest level to walk to practices and risk their safety. Thank you for your time. I hope you guys consider and listen to what I said.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juliana Barrios, followed by, followed by Manny Travieso.
Good evening, board members. My name is Juliana Barrios. I am currently a junior at John Burrows High School, and I proudly play for the varsity softball team. My mom brought me and my siblings here when I was around three, and we heard all sorts of good things about Burbank. It was said to be safe, have excellent schooling, and that equality is promoted amongst its community. But time after time, you, the school district of Burbank, have proven this to be wrong. As a female, I find equality very important, especially in this month where we celebrate the victories of women before me like Susan B. Anthony, Simone de Beauvoir, and Gloria Steinem. I find it ridiculous how far we've come, yet the people who claim to want Burbank equal push us 10 steps back. The softball program and I are not asking for much, but just your consideration. We've worked hard, we've worked just as hard as any program, whether it be male or female, just to get ignored. You've left us with nothing, while if we were to look at the other sports programs at Burrows High, compared to us, it's luxury. Just, just to go to practice is a liability in itself. About a month ago, an armed robber was roaming the streets, which so happened to also be the path we take to Olive. My freshman year, we had been recorded and filmed and posted on social media app TikTok and ridiculed. Where's the safety in that? And this isn't the first-time occurrence. Every morning at 7:30 AM, I am forced to carry all my bags, then carry them all the way to the field, and personally, I'm tired. While we are grateful for the little that we get, it's still unfortunate that not, that not even our small requests, like getting fences in the outfield, bullpens, and more sheds for storage, cannot be fulfilled. What do we need to do as a program to get your help and be heard? You say you care, but your actions say different. Prove us wrong. Thank you.
Sir, Travieso?
Very good.
There we go.
That was pretty good.
Multiple attempts.
Amazing, amazing.
I try.
Thank you so much for hearing me out. I don't know what you guys did wrong, you're so far away, but I hope one day they'll get you guys in. Thank you so much again for your time. I'm actually here to talk on behalf of Burrows High School. I'm, I'm the coach of Providence. I'm the head coach of varsity softball there. I work with the WBSC, which is the World Baseball Softball Confederation, which is the actual people in charge of the Olympics. I work with a lot of national teams, and I want to just tell a quick story. So my daughter was supposed to go to Burrows. We've been in Burbank for about 25 years. My two-step daughters went to Burrows, and she was supposed to go there. And about two years before she went, she was going to go there, I talked to people in the school district and trying to figure out, hey, what's going on? How come the baseball fields have, they actually have a stadium and the girls have a field without a fence? And they said at that time, this is eight years ago, that, oh, we're looking into it, it's going to be equal, Title IX, woo, woo. I'm like, okay, cool, that's great. Nothing happened. Then we started looking around, because she wanted to be, go as far as she could, be able to play at the highest level, and also be able to play one of the top universities in the world. So she decided to go to Alamonny High School, because they actually have a softball field there. And now she's playing at Cornell, she's starting third base at Cornell. We're not paying anything, which is fantastic. But it's sad that still, nothing is happening. We offered, when I became a softball coach in this amazing 2020 year, I don't know if you heard, something kind of funky happened at that time, I offered right away to talk to Parks and Rec and say, hey, we would like a fence, because we actually share, you know, Olive One, then Olive Three, right across, and we said, we would like to get a fence. Right away, the favorite word, well, the second favorite word, no, came to play right away. And we even said, okay, how about we, if we share it, the fence? And I talked to Providence High School and said, yeah, no problem, we'll buy the fence. First, it was like they don't want sticks in the ground, so we decided to get one without it, and they approved, everything's good, ready to go, but they just haven't been able to. And again, this is taking forever, you know? They deserve a field, a true field that they can call their own, and I think this is extremely important. And I know you guys are doing your best, and I do appreciate you listening. It feels to me that it's pretty simple, you know, to be able to give Cornell a contract, help the teachers, you know, and equality for the girls. Seems to be a pretty easy thing, but for me, it's a lot easier said than done, so I understand. There's a lot of things that happen, but I wanted you to hear from someone from the outside. I mean, you know, again, being a Providence coach, I'm, by the way, if you don't know, it's the third high school in Burbank. I know, we don't get. Oh, he's the fourth, okay. I don't know, it's okay. So I got to find out what the fourth one is. And I really do appreciate that.
Monterey High School.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Fantastic, that's fantastic. I'll figure out where, what that place is. And I do want to say that, because of what happened with my daughter, she created a foundation called Empowering Leadership in Latina Athletes. This is to level the playing field for all Latinas in the United States. Very proud of that. And I want to say, you don't spend your money on the helmets, the foundation's going to get them, okay? All right? So thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Otis, followed by Barry Sarnum.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Otis, and I am from that fourth high school. Monterey.
That's a school that we should learn more about.
Thank you.
What's the name again?
Monterey.
Thank you.
Yeah. We don't have any sports teams, but we will take donations. All right. I'm Michelle Otis, and I am from that fourth high school. Monterey.
That's a school that we should learn more about.
Thank you.
What's the name again?
Monterey.
Thank you.
Yeah. We don't have any sports teams, but we will take donations. All right. I have lived in and around Burbank for much of my life. So let me start by saying I love Burbank. I love the city, I love the school district, and I love my job. Most noneducators might wonder what it is teachers love about our jobs. After all, the hours are long and the expectations are high. It is a stressful job on the best of days. So why do we stay? We stay for that one kid who needs a positive influence in their life. We stay for those lightbulb moments. We stay because of our students and the hope they bring for the future. But this isn't enough to keep many teachers in the classroom. Across the country, teachers are leaving the profession in droves. There's even a whole cottage industry of consultants who help teachers transition from the classroom into the private sector. BUSD itself has lost a lot of great people. Frankly, the pressure is too much, and the pay is too low for what is expected of teachers every day. I've been teaching for 22 years, and I've seen the demands on teachers grow and grow. We need to do what we can to attract and retain quality teachers. So what can be done? Improving working conditions for teachers, especially those in SED with regards to class size and assistance in the classroom, is a great idea. Using a ground-up rather than a top-down approach to decision-making is another. And still another, especially in a city as expensive as Burbank, is raising teacher salaries. I am a data person, and I always make sure my students do their due diligence and show me evidence. I know that we can't compare ourselves to LAUSD, because it would be comparing apples to oranges. So I went looking for other apples. On the National Center for Education Statistics website, they have a tool where you can compare your district with peer districts. These are districts that are similar in size, demographics, and funding. We have five peer districts in California. Then I went to Transparent California to find out what the average teacher salary was for our peer districts. The average teacher salary for BUSD's peer districts comes out to $93,335 per year. The average teacher salary for BUSD is $80,665. $93,000 compared with $80,000. When comparing apples to apples, one seems a whole lot bigger than the other. In fact, the salaries at the peer districts are 15.7% higher than BUSD. That's big. They have similar demographics and funding, which means it all has to do with where the district is choosing to invest its money. And it is an investment. Better salaries means retaining quality teachers. Retaining teachers means students can develop those essential relationships that help them feel secure and cared for at school. Students who feel cared for do better in school and ultimately later in life. In other words, investing in teachers means investing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Barry Sarna, followed by Aram Arakelian, and then we have an additional card. I'm going to continue to accept cards until the final speaker has concluded their remarks. Mr. Sarna, welcome.
Hey, good to see everybody. Good evening, board members and staff. I'm Barry Sarna, and I'm a retired BUSD teacher of 25 years and currently a substitute teacher for BUSD. And I just want to say what a joy it is to hear former colleagues and former principals and staff with their passion for what they do, for their students, not really for themselves and their money. Although money is an issue, I hope each and every one of them gets what they want, and we find the money somehow from the state or, talking about LCAP and other things, to find those funds that I know you want to get for everyone. In my conversations as a sub and with my friends, with teachers, staff, and parents, there's much concern about discipline policies and consequences for many kinds of student transgressions. One of concern was recently addressed by a former principal, Tom Crowther here, in an open letter in myburbank.com regarding hate speech in schools. There have been numerous instances of this, and one issue led a little while back with certain books in the classroom. It's clear that there's frustration with how consequences are dealt with that don't help to solve the problem. In fact, I've heard from many teachers and parents that consequences do not match the severity or frequency of many behavior problems in BUSD. I'm here to tell you that these problems will never change without involvement by the most important stakeholders in our schools: parents. Let me use a visual that my wife taught me. You've seen her recently, about 180 days of school. Maybe you've seen it. So 180 days of school. Here's the time teachers have. Here's the time students are sleeping. Here's the time students have with their parents. That's the time that they have to help us and to learn from their parents. Parents need to help us teach what BUSD expectations are. Teachers, staff, and substitutes like me must complete training every year on bullying, harassment, child abuse, and suicide, and teachers attend DEI professional development. So I propose yearly trainings for parents on subjects that involve hate speech, diversity, BUSD policies and expectations, and rules, et cetera, before each school year begins or with a timeline for them to complete, just like teachers. This could be online or public, school site meetings. This might help fix some of the issues that take the burden off teachers and staff. I believe parents will support this kind of effort to make schools physically and emotionally safe for kids. I know you might tell me that there are codes or other issues that would prevent this, but clearly your current plan is not working, so please find a way to get all parents involved. And I'm happy to offer my services to work on a committee to implement such a plan. Of course, tonight, I can't leave without talking about teacher raises just a little bit and recruiting, being able to recruit the best for BUSD. You'll need a school bond to be able to free other money to offer for teachers. That's the only way, unless you change things at the state level. One more issue, a little bit closer to me. I'd like you to look into BUSD policies concerning how religion and religious events are deemed educationally relevant at schools. I say this because there seems to be inconsistency that needs to be addressed, especially within the framework of DEI, as to who decides what is and what is not religious in nature and what is cultural in nature when it comes to celebrations and events. Many of you know I was a seventh-grade social studies teacher and took my class for 13 or 14 years, I forget, on a walking field trip. I know you attended, and I know Dr. Hill attended, to houses of worship. I will tell you, I'll let you know that I have no... I'm telling you this because I have no objection about teaching about religions in school for history, cultural, and informational purposes. Thank you for listening.
Next, we have Aram Arakelian. I think I saw him leave. Okay. Going once, going twice. Our last card is Jessica Cribs.
Should I wait for him? Yeah, I think I'll wait. I mean, I don't... I mean, he's here, so I can just wait. There he is. Thank you. No worries.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jessica Cribs. I am a parent in Burbank. I have lived here for 20 some odd years. I'm also a college athlete. I am also a coach. I've coached university volleyball, junior varsity softball, and I've actually coached many of the girls sitting on both, you know, aisles over here. A lot of these kids I've coached and/or coached against. My daughter's in the back. I am not new to women's sports. Women's sports, I am so grateful for, has helped me pay for college, is going to help my daughter pay for her college. Some of these girls here already signed and going to college. Softball is a really... You have two really great teams here. And yes, I'm here to support Coach Nickel and his program, because they do have it a little worse off than we have it over at Burbank. We at least have a fence. You have to hit it a little higher and a little farther, but many of these girls have hit it over, if you've seen any of them play. And I just really want to share about the importance of a fence. It's integral... It's got... It's important to the integrity of the softball game. And let me explain why. Because if you've seen any of these girls hit, like just for example, in one of our games over at Burbank High School, we had a girl hit it over the fence at McCambridge Park, okay? That's a high... That's a big fence, okay? And the girls are capable, some of these girls are capable of doing it. And when she hits it over the fence, that's an earned run. Nobody can take that from her. Nobody can... And these girls work hard. These girls work hard to be able to hit that ball. So when we play at Olive, and you've seen, I've seen Rachel hit it far enough, I've seen my daughter Shelby hit it far enough, I've seen Alyssa, I've seen Chloe, I've seen Stevie, I've seen all these girls hit it far enough, and they don't get to have their earned runs, because there's no fence. It's integral to this sport. They're robbed of a lot of hard work when we get out there. Another thing I want to share, just while we're talking about the equity of women's sports in Burbank, I also understand, I don't even think there's a place to put a field at Burbank High School. I totally understand that. However, in the past two years, my daughter's a senior this year, but we missed a year because of COVID. In the past two years of play, we have been kicked off of our field for a game twice at McCambridge Park. A varsity girls program. We had to drive our girls to McCambridge Park to go into our storage shed to get our equipment, to then host a CIF playoff game. We were hosting another school, was driving down from one of the beach cities over at... Help me out, what's it...
Maxim.
It was at Maxim. It was at Maxim. No shade, no field conditions. It was horrible. And we not only had to get that, our equipment, and leave to go to the other field, we had to see a 12-year-old boys' team having practice. That's the reason why we couldn't. So I went on Twitter, because I get angry sometimes and I go on Twitter, and I tweeted... I tweeted, I do. And I tweeted all the local news agencies, and I tagged our schools on it. And I got a phone call within an hour from both of our assistant principals of athletics at Burbank High School and our athletic department, our AD, both assuring me this would never happen again. Guess what? Happened again. And our girls got kicked off the field for a T-ball game where we had to go play at Valley Park. We have a scoreboard that was fundraised and paid for at McCambridge. I understand we have to work with Parks and Rec. I understand it's not easy. I understand. But it's not okay. It's absolutely not okay. The 12-year-old game or practice could have been easily moved to Maxim, where they did not need the field conditions we needed when we were hosting a CIF playoff game. It's not all right. Anyway, I think that's... I'm just here in support. There's a lot of things that are not okay, in my opinion, that we just deal with, because that's what we do. And it is making our girls a lot stronger. We also have to commute, obviously, to our field, but it's not as far as these girls have to walk. Anyway, that's my time, but thank you.
And thank you for waiting. Miss, next speaker and final speaker right now is Diana Abasta.
Good evening, President Ferguson, members of the Board of Eds, Superintendent Hill, members of the district and community. My name is Diana Abast, and I'm an English teacher at Burbank High School, and I'm also honored to be the BTA president. Today, I was able to experience once again what my elementary colleagues do day in and day out. Today was Read Across America Day, and I read to eight classes, K stepping stones in 2 through 5. Each class is different, and each class had 24 to 34 students who are as unique as the stars in the sky. Yet, the expectation is, regardless of whether there is adequate planning time, my colleagues must plan for multiple subjects and differentiate assignments, which again takes time, time that is not within the contracted workday. The same day, the same thing goes with secondary teachers and counselors and nurses, SLPs, and around-the-belt teachers. Looking at our different positions and our job duties and responsibility does not require any type of job study to see that teachers, counselors, speech and language pathologists, nurses, and around-the-belt teachers are overworked and undercompensated. The 2021-22 LA County District Salary Survey shows that we are nowhere near the top quartile in salary. So this is what would equivalent to maybe a job study might be. In most cases, we're almost at the bottom. How can that be? The community must wonder at the contracts being put before you tonight. We certainly do not begrudge anyone fair compensation for work done. However, a 5% raise for someone making over $175,000 with not even a year's worth of service calls the question of what is fair compensation? I have worked 42 years, and never once have I received a raise in Burbank without having to come to this mic and sit in the audience and hear about structural deficits and multi-year projections where Burbank would be in the red every third year out. This year, by far, BUSD has received the most ongoing money, 11.3% in new ongoing LCFF funds. In addition to this, BUSD has received millions of dollars in one-time funds that can be used in a variety of uses based on the rules of the grant. Many districts, as you've heard, have already given substantial raises this year, many in the double digits, to their education employees who are struggling like everyone else to keep up with inflation. So if inflation was 8% last year, what did our 5% raise do for a salary of $75,000 when the employee is paying several hundreds of dollars in health insurance premiums? Sadly, many educators have left the profession for other professions that pay better than Burbank, because they cannot afford to live in areas like Burbank where the rents are high and the cost of living is high. At the same time, school districts are competing for a shrinking group of highly qualified educators. And educators who are not locked in because of years of service are looking to go where they can make a salary that allows them to live in the communities or that allows them to provide for themselves and their families. While no one goes into education to become wealthy, educators do expect a salary and benefits and healthy and safe working conditions that allow them to do their professional job without having to worry about how to make ends meet. This leads me back to that shrinking pool. How will we attract new teachers to come and stay in Burbank? They will not stay for bottom-of-the-barrel pay. In the LA County 2021-22 District Salary Survey, teacher on the maximum salary with 20 years of experience, that's a bachelor plus 75 units and a master's, we rank 37 out of 47. Teachers will not stay for bottom-of-the-barrel pay. The other concern is the one-time funding recommendations that came before you with actual positions. What happens when that one-time funding goes away? Will those assistant principals, assistant HR director, director of secondary schools and DEI, or will they become an encroachment on the general fund? Two weeks ago, I spoke about the vacant positions in SED and the lack of time given to SED teachers and SLPs to do all that they have to do. We finally got a SED article, but without the resources needed, such as time and reduced caseloads, to do the job. And yet, there is a SED response team in the one-time funding that has been budgeted. So this year, it's $356,000, and then for the following year, $712,000. Did any of you ask SED and SLPs what kind of response is most beneficial in the quest to serve our students with individualized needs? For years, our teachers met in task force and have given recommendations on what is needed. Another year goes by, and we lose a few more highly qualified educators. I can only hope that tomorrow, when the district's negotiation team meets with us, that you will remember, teachers will not stay for bottom-of-the-barrel pay. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will close the in-person public comment. We do have two speakers who are chiming in on virtual public comments, so we'll begin with Kelly Bishar, followed by Sally Palacio.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to the board, and I felt compelled to come here and speak tonight after seeing the email statement that was sent out January 18th of this year. It was sent out by John Burrows High School to parents regarding a teacher under investigation for improper conduct. And in my opinion, it is a Band-Aid that is filled with mollifying language to make the community feel that their children are being supported and that they are safe. And in my experience, they are not. My child had an incident at John Burrows High School this past semester, where they reported feeling very unsafe around another student due to an outside incident. And while I realize that is one student's word against another, this was a complaint that clearly fell under Title IX, and it should have been treated with respect, at the very least documented and investigated. My child gave details as to why they felt unsafe, and the guidance office administrator's response was, oh, that's terrible. However, nothing can be done, but you can switch your class to not be around them. My child was told that the campus officer would be contacted and would follow up with them. Three months later, when no follow-up happened, my child followed up with this administrator again, now involving the help of a teacher, a counselor, and other students. They were told by the same administrator at first that they didn't remember this incident, because they never documented it. And then they admitted remembering the incident, and at that point emailed the campus officer. Meanwhile, my child was getting more and more anxious, and grades were dropping rapidly. My child and others started to speak out about the lack of accountability they experienced at Burrows, and only at this point did the assistant superintendent and principal get involved. They shared how incredibly important it was to them to protect and support my child, and they shared that there were other complaints against this particular... and they shared that there were other complaints against this particular administrator. After placating my family that this was being handled, there was no more contact. I had to follow up, and I was told very curtly that this was a personnel issue and I would not receive any information on how it was investigated or what the outcome was. As far as I know, this administrator is still there. And now there are very serious allegations in this statement that was emailed that are being investigated, although this has been going on for years. And I quote, "The district is committed to transparent and direct communication with our parents and the BUSD community at large." In my opinion, that is not true. My experience has been unless you scream and make things uncomfortable or go viral with a TikTok, it is all brushed under the rug. I do want to say that my early years at BUSD with my kids were wonderful, and I have friends that I consider family who work for this school district, and they are amazing. But I have found that if your child has any sort of issue at John Burrows High School that might reflect poorly on staff, teachers or admins there, you cannot trust that they will get the support they need if they report it. I truly hope that someone will follow up with me, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. We'll move to Sally Palacio.
Hello. Hi. Good evening.
Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening. Respectfully addressing all board members, I'm here to address the agenda item on 13K, the proposal to shut down the Monterey Infant Center. I'd like to start off by saying that the staff at the Monterey Center are loving, caring and dedicated to our children, providing a safe and healthy nurturing environment that allows our children to grow, discover and learn through a variety of experiences. The center not only loves and encourages our children, but foster their social, cognitive and motor developments. With the shortage of daycare centers, the proposal to shut down the center would affect not only the children, the staff and the attachments that our kids have developed. As a single working mother, it is difficult to find childcare that is affordable, and being forced to look for care elsewhere while trying to stay afloat financially is quite difficult in these times. It is a financial burden that some of us cannot afford, and I'm pleading to have the consideration of the Monterey Center remain open as long as possible and continue to care for the six children that are currently enrolled. Parents who already have limited options for affordable, high-quality childcare before the pandemic are facing even harder options today. This in turn is keeping a lot of parents, particularly working mothers, out of the workforce, which hinders the economic recovery. The outrageous cuts not only to the proposal of this infant center, but also to all the other concerns that the schools are facing is obviously causing the city to scramble. At a time when Burbank Department of Education is asking to do more for our students and communities, it's unbelievable that you guys are choosing to give us less. The increased needs of our children and families are undeniable, and our collective job is to provide the best that we can for our kids and our city. My question is, how can the city and the Department of Education claim to be doing their best when you're not providing our schools with budgets that are sufficient to maintain the staffing and provide the appropriate school programming? I'm really asking that you consider to keep the Monterey Center infant open for me, myself, my families and all of the other families that would be affected by this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, we will close public communications. Thank you to everybody who came down tonight. We will begin with the superintendent's responses to public comment, and then we will go to board responses. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Ferguson, and thank you to all the speakers this evening. There were a lot of passionate, detailed comments. I'm going to group my responses just based on the topics, but I do appreciate everyone coming down. And I know sometimes this format can be challenging of what we can respond to, what we cannot. So I want to just acknowledge that upfront. For all this, and that goes with Ms. Coronado and all of the parents, I greatly appreciate your advocacy and your voice. Responding to personnel issues is not something I can do in this forum. I do want to stress and share that any personnel decision is done very thoughtfully by the supervisors involved with support from the district office to make sure that all the considerations have been placed. I appreciate your experience, your service in, in the district, and I definitely can hear from the parents that came here tonight. But with personnel issues, I can't go into a lot of details of why those decisions were made and how it happened. That goes for current and former employees, just can't, can't comment on personnel issues. But I appreciate everyone coming down this evening. Along the same vein of what we can and cannot comment on, I know Ms. Bashar, that the staff and legal have been in conversations with you and getting more details, but as far as commenting on specifics, I know it can be frustrating when we're, we're dealing with personnel issues or issues with minors, so we can't openly communicate on that. That does not mean we're not being transparent. We're being transparent to the extent that the law allows us to be transparent, but we do take every situation very seriously and we work through those. And I know for the public listening, they, they would want to know more details, but we cannot get into that level of detail. Ms. Shipstead, thank you for coming down, and I apologize. I, I didn't realize if I was in your room and I left when you asked me to stay. So I, I will come back and I will spend much more time in your room. I was not aware of all the concerns that you raised. I will follow up with staff after this meeting and dig into it, and I'll follow up with you as well. So, but thank you for raising the concerns. I know there's other speakers this evening talking about the supports for special education. It was more aligned to what we're going to talk about in negotiations. I won't go into the details, but we hear you, and we will look forward to the conversation tomorrow. So some of it is recruitment and hiring, some of it is contract language, but we will continue to work through the, the challenges with special education. Same with Ms. Will Sarna. We recently had a conversation around kindergarten. I appreciate you reading the feedback from the heart teachers. I know there's been a lot of discussions from teachers about expanding kindergarten, and that's a negotiated topic as well. So I'll save comments on that, but I know the, the, both sides, BTA and the district, we want to come to a thoughtful plan for where we move forward. So it's good to hear the feedback. For Mr. Nickel and the players and the parents on softball. I apologize. Thank you. On the, on the softball conversation, several topics were, were new to me tonight, so I need to follow up. It sounds like our former Director of Facilities and Assistant Superintendent were working on some of these. Mr. Cantwell and I were texting to see if he knew about the, the issues about the fence and some of the joint use agreements. That's a new topic for us, so we're going to work on that directly to understand that. Taking a step back, the concerns about having dedicated fields at Burbank High and John Burrows, that is something that needs to be addressed in this community. We need to look through it. We recently contracted with a firm to do a facilities master plan to look at all of our school sites, what are upgrades. A specific topic that we talked to them during the proposal period is they need to analyze Burbank High and John Burrows High School, and what are the options? Is there a possibility eventually build a field? Now, that's a longer-term process, but I just want to make sure it's very clear and on the record that is a requirement of this facilities master plan that is, is kicking off and will be happening throughout this spring, summer, and we'll have a plan in the fall. So we know what the options are for our long-term facilities. And now, as far as the current challenges and needs, definitely some of the things that were raised, I think there should be doables, so we will work with the city and understand why it got stalled and what can be addressed. So we definitely want to look into that. I know Mr. Cantwell and his finance team, he's new to the district, so he's been looking at budgets. He did highlight that looking at the athletic transportation budget is something that hasn't been adjusted, it should have been adjusted over the years. So that is a recommendation that he's already put into our budget update, which is for the second interim, which is March, March 16th. And so he's already had a conversation about that. But I do want to be clear that a lot of the speakers commented on that topic, saying that was tied to the proposed raises, whether it was raises for our CSEA employees, our management employees or our contract employees. This issue is not tied to that at all. Those, those are cost of living adjustments that have been negotiated with CSEA and that we're bringing forward. And that, that is not why some of these issues haven't been resolved. So I want to be on the record on that, but we will be very clear to address these concerns. And Mr. Nickel, if you ever have a challenge and you're working with my staff and they're not being responsive, please don't wait. Just reach out to me because I did not know about these. For Mr. Sarna, thank you on the, the comments on about the hate speech. I do want to be clear that we do progressive discipline. I know there was a recent letter to the editor. The facts weren't all accurate on that. We engage parents step one. I really like your ideas about are there additional things we can do with parents? I know we've done some partnerships with PTA, but there's always more we can do. But we have a progressive discipline framework that is flexible, and we work with our administrators on that to address the nature of hate speech or others. So we will continue to work on that. I appreciate your suggestion. For Ms. Palacio, definitely we will reach out to, to you and the other families impacted by the infant center. I know that's an item that's going to be voted on, but I know with the families that are currently in the program, we've talked to the YMCA to partner with them to make that transition thoughtful and help those families out because we know it is challenging to have affordable childcare. We made a commitment to the families that are currently enrolled in our childcare program to help them until their, their children age out of that program. So we will be in touch with more details on that depending on the vote this evening. Again, thank you to all the speakers this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. With that, we'll go to board member responses, starting with Ms. Tabit.
As Dr. Hill said, thank you to all the speakers who came down tonight. It's always enlightening and a learning experience sometimes to hear, especially from our teachers, what you're experiencing and what you go through on a day-to-day basis, obviously very different from what I have to experience every day. So I feel compassionate, and I am also very thankful that you're here, like Mrs. Shipstead, and the work you do in our classroom. Kathy, we've spoken many times, and I, and I appreciate all that you do. And I hope that when you, when your negotiating team comes tomorrow to negotiations and meets with the district negotiation teams, of which no board member is on, but when they meet, I hope we get to check off as many of those boxes as we possibly can. And I believe in the district team wants the same thing. So let's hope for the best and work together. And if it doesn't go that way, that we can work together also as a team to figure out ways to make those things happen going forward. Mr. Sarna, Dr. Hill took the words out of my mouth. Thank you. I love the idea of working with our parent groups on DEI and ask, and, and some teaching moments for those parents. I've, sometimes it would also be nice if non-parents community members could have some of that training as well. I read things on Facebook that sometimes just turn my stomach with the thought process of some folks. So I, I love that idea. And thank you also for coming, not just with, hey, guys, here's a problem, but here's a possible solution. I, I love that. I think it's important, and it, it really helps as a leader to hear that someone else maybe has an idea that you hadn't thought of as, as I go forward to talk about softball. That's, that's, you know, something you, there's problems, there's situations, you think, you come and I, you know, but sometimes other people in other areas have a different experience that might bring about another idea. So thank you for that. Where was I? Mrs. Krips, thank you for coming down and speaking on behalf, also being the only Burbank High softball parent here and being in support of, as, as also you, coach from Providence. Thanks for coming down and supporting the girls and speaking up. I appreciate that. I was going to talk about my softball career, but Mrs. Krips, wow. I had no idea. I coached Parks and Rec for about 20 years, and that's as far as I got. But I did coach Coach Thomas's mom back in the day, 40-plus years ago. And I also played Burbank High, I also played softball at Burbank High. And guess what, ladies and parents? I had to walk at the end of the day to one side of the school to go to the locker room to change into my practice gear and walk all the way to the other side and three blocks down, and this was 40 years ago, to McCambridge Park. And then I had to walk to the far side of McCambridge Park because I played JV, and that's where JV played. So this is not a new situation. It's been going on for decades, obviously. Recently, as part of my role or my part on the facilities committee, we had gone through options for how to look at what we could do for softball at both high schools. We met with coaches, we met with admin, we met with athletic directors, and tons of ideas were put out, and none of them are great, unfortunately. The best-case scenario, and, and even that's a long way off, is the master plan, facilities master plan, to talk about where could we fit softball fields at Burbank and Burrows? Then we'd have to figure out where the money comes from. And then, as we learned with the pool, it takes years for a project to go through, get it approved and get it funded, so, and, and move forward. So it's not that it can't happen, but it's going to take a long time, and I'm hoping for the best. I did not know either about the fencing, Coach Nichols. Never heard about that, and I'm glad that you've brought it up so that Dr. Hill and Dr. Paramo, we can reach out, and I'm happy to help in any way I can as well. And I'm assuming you mean the fencing that goes in the backfield. That's what we're talking about, like at?
Home run fence.
Yeah. There you go. They can't be that hard, I think, you know? Well, don't get us in trouble. It's not a, yeah. Anyway, I did, I did kind of, so my fault. So hopefully that'll work out because that's, should be an easy thing to get going, and seems, from what I've heard, would make a big difference. So hopefully that comes together soon. And I do hope you guys have a wonderful season, by the way. If the rain stops. I know. I texted you one day, why aren't you at the field? You're like, we can't be on it. And also, yes, I agree, Mrs. Krips and everybody else, if we have the field, important game or not, our game should get to finish as part of the joint use, not be stopped regardless. If it's day one of the first season, our game should get to finish prior to Parks and Rec coming in. They can, you know, wait a little bit, move later, but no way, if we have that field, should a regulation game be stopped or moved to another location. That's just, and I think we've talked about that with the joint use committee, and that should, I know it's happened twice, but let's hope it doesn't happen going forward. I hope I hit it, oh, and like Dr. Hill said, in response to the teacher from Mrs., from McKinley, we do not speak about staffing or any of the things that happen with employees. And I think that's about, I've hit on about everything. So thank you. Oh, and I hope Mrs. Palacio about the Monterey Infant Center, please watch the rest of the meeting and listen to the report on the Monterey Childcare Center, and hopefully that will make a little bit more sense. It was, well, we haven't voted yet, but anyway, thank you so very much, everyone who came down and spoke. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Dr. Agger Conian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start first with the dual immersion program. You know, English is my fourth language, and I didn't speak English before I came to the United States. I also been through three different educational system, British, the German, Hopshur system, and then with three in the United States. And, you know, I always tell my students, you know, in college and university level that, you know, speaking a second or third language in today's global markets really adds value in terms of where you're going. And people ask, you know, job interviews, do you speak any other languages? When I first came to the United States when I was almost 18, I was advised not to speak my other languages. And I'm learning Spanish now, and I think it is important because we are helping our students. And if you look at some of the numbers in terms of our students not coming to our district, part of it has to do because some of the neighboring districts have very strong dual immersion programs. I know it's I know it's challenging in terms of funding, but it is something that we need to continue talking about. I am not going to, as my colleague said, get into the conversation of what's happening right now because of, you know, the personnel issues, but I can tell you that we need to do more when it comes to dual immersion, but also, you know, welcome other languages as well as Burbank is going through the changes. So it is important for all of us. So thank you for all the parents who came forward to talk about this issue. It is important, but it's also for the best of our students when it comes to some of these programs. And I want us to see growing them if we can in the future. As far as the athletes go, again, same thing. First of all, I can tell you that as someone who didn't know what baseball or softball was before I came here, I mean, I played high school football because I thought they meant soccer, you know? But I have seen, one of our friends who's here in the audience, I've seen the Facebook posts about what her both daughters have gone through and all the challenges. I read that stuff. It's a lot of work. And I want to thank all of our young leaders here who are doing this. It's difficult, I understand, but I think we can solve this easily. I mean, for me, again, just like my colleague said, it's the first time I've heard about this. But I think we also need to talk about the bigger solutions. All we can work together in partnerships with the city, the state, even the federal government if we have to, in terms of creating partnerships that can fund these issues. I've said this before and I say it again, for someone who worked for the speaker's office, worked on the state budget, I can tell you, it's the system that's an issue. The way our teachers and programs get funded, it has to change or else we're going to have these conversations every year. Because yes, we have one good year like last year and we get all this little one-time extra money, go spend it and have fun with it. And look at us today, 20 billion in deficit. Last year we had 40 billion surplus. So if we're going to have these serious conversations in terms of our educators and being through other systems, I can tell you, Germany, teachers are one of the highest-paid professions, if not, if not one of the highest paid. And there's a reason why, you know, countries like Germany tend to be always in the top GDP when it comes to world economics because they really invest heavily in education and within that comes sports. So I think if we're going to have these conversations, I think as a community, we need to come together and really address our state and how these fundings need to be spent. Because people say, well, Armand, you know, it's not going to happen. I've said this, you can go watch me over and over again, how we can advocate for the change of these programs. Or else we're going to have these conversations every year. You have a low rain and everything changes, right? There is, right now, this issues with, for example, transportation, roads. Again, when it comes to education, we have to make sure that our elected officials in the higher level understand that it should be a priority for the future. That includes adding more dual immersion programs. It includes really encouraging athletes. We're talking about buses here. Partnerships are wonderful, but at the end of the day, you know, the way we get funded, and I always remind people, oranges and apples, someone brought the example, the way cities get funded versus school districts are very different. And it's challenging for all of us here, but I think when we talk about these programs, it is important that we bring this forward as a united voice. Someone brought up the whole DEI thing with parents. You know, parents have been attending these meetings. When the DEI committee was founded, myself and one of my colleagues, it was, it's all parents. We have DEI now, little small committees at also our schools. I think it's an issue that we need to have a conversation about. I appreciate what is being brought forward, but at the same time, if we don't have an honest conversation, next year is an election time, there's going to be a lot of changes in state and senate seats. Bring these issues forward and make that as a condition. Because for us, the funding is different and I know this because I worked on the budget for years for the state. I understand how it works. So I do want to appreciate the passion and, you know, you coming forward and talking about this. But I think we need to once and for all really have a serious conversation about the way our schools get funded. We've gone from number one to number 48 when it comes to funding. Just think about that. The fifth largest economy in the world and we are the 48 when it comes to funding for our education. That's what the embarrassment is here. So I hope that we can continue this conversation and some of my colleagues work with legislators and some of us are friends, but I do want to thank everyone for coming and talking about these issues. Bye.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody for speaking. Dr. Crowther, thank you so much for your comments and thank you for your emails. It's clear how much you care about and are invested in the district. I wanted to talk a little bit about our, this is sort of a thought I had throughout the course of tonight's public comment. And I know that when we come to the meetings, people are coming because it often feels like it's the last resort and the things they've been feeling, they've been feeling for a long time and they kind of hold on to them and then they wait and then they come. And we've talked a lot about, you know, email us before and I know sometimes, I can't remember, I'll go back through it. Oh, Ms. Sarna was talking about how she emailed and only had one person respond. And so sometimes when we say email us, I know it's empty because you do and then echo chamber. But I do want to say that, you know, everybody up here and everybody for, I would say, everybody here is here because we care an enormous amount about the district. And sometimes I feel like there's, from all sides, right? There's not an assumption of good intentions or best intentions, that we're all here to do what's best for the district and our students. And I think that we can actively advocate for the things that we want without disparaging other people. Our assistant superintendents work night and day for this district. Long before I was here, I know that the first place that we cut was in the district office in order to avoid cuts in our classrooms as long as we possibly could. And I know that being part of unions, you guys want what's best for all employees, not just, the teachers want to support CSEA and want to support BSA. And so I think that there's a way for us all to advocate for the things we care about and that we're passionate about without disparaging other people who are working equally hard to do what's best for our teachers, our students and our staff. Everyone's allowed to take a lunch. Everyone's allowed to use social media. I mean, with respect, you called district staff vermin on Twitter and posted a picture of the district office being fumigated. And that's totally, you're right. But I don't, but I think when you do that, then to call out other people's social media use, like, I know you're better than that. So when we're making our arguments, I just want us to come from a place of like, we want what's best, all of us in here, and we may express it in different ways and we may not agree with one another a lot, and that is everybody's right to do so, but I don't think that attacking other people that you work with or used to work with or who are working with your children is going to get anywhere further than where we are right now. So I'm just asking people to be kind a little bit, even though I know we're all fighting in many ways for our own livelihood and our well-being and the sports that we care about, that's all hugely important, but so too is treating one another like we're human beings. So I just wanted to say that. Mr. Crowther, or Dr. Crowther, excuse me, you brought up some really important points about the HR director and the DEI director and something that I wanted to talk briefly about, and we've said this before, is that these positions were created in conversation over the last couple of years with concerns that staff raised, concerns that teachers raised. And you're absolutely right in the data that we got back. Pretty small sample size, which is something that I'm thinking a lot about, is how can we get larger numbers of people to respond? But when we're talking about the inability to hire people more quickly, that's because the number of staff we have in HR is so small, they're sort of doing the work of millions when there's like two people and some gumballs. So the HR director position is meant to help speed that process up. So too with the secondary DEI director is also meant to address a lot of the issues that we're hearing. So I don't mean to say like, don't worry about it, but what I mean to say is these positions are created in order to alleviate concerns, not to dismiss or put money somewhere where it shouldn't be. But I do think you raise, you're not the only one to raise those questions. I hope you will continue to raise those questions and bring them to us whenever they occur to you. And I, again, want to thank you for the time that you clearly put into all of the communication that you've been sending. Ms. Shipstad, when I was at Roosevelt, I didn't get to visit your room. That's a huge bummer. I will come back and visit your room. I visited a bunch of other rooms.
I visited one.
Well, I didn't know that. But Ms. Abosta knows I have a day off from school on, we have a grading day on March 13th and I will be bopping around to schools every chance I get and hopefully I will bop into your room. To Ms., to everybody who came and spoke about Senora Coronado, thank you so much for your passion and including you, Ms. Coronado, and for your service. As Dr. Hill said, it feels like the lamest thing in the world to say I cannot comment on this, but I literally cannot, other than to say that it speaks volumes that we have such an active parent community who's willing to come on a Thursday night and speak so passionately about you and about their children. All of the amazing people who came to speak about softball, something I want to share, Mr. Ferguson and I have been in a conversation with our city council. So we're doing these sort of three, is it three meetings? Coming up on a meeting very soon with the mayor and vice mayor. And one of the issues that we have and we've already brought up is joint use and how we can fix it so that you do not get bumped off of a field when you're playing a game. So I don't know the scheduling that happens within Parks and Rec, but I know that it's an issue that we've already brought up and that we will be talking about, it will be agendized in that joint meeting, which is how do we make sure that doesn't happen again? It just seems bananas. It's a technical term. So please know that will be brought up. The other information that everybody shared, and thank you to all the coaches and players who shared it, is news to me, so I'm digesting it. But I obviously, it's huge and it's important and the last thing I think any of us want is for you to feel less than, because we don't view you as less than, but it's impossible not to feel that way when what you receive is less than. So I know that we'll be having conversations. I have to say how excited I am to have Mr. Cantwell here because the amount of progress we've made in the very short time that he's been here in resolving facilities issues has been astronomical. So I've never felt more confident in saying, I really believe we're going to find a solution because we have someone who finds solutions, which is a really comforting thing to be able to say. And I don't know, you know, if I could have said that before. So I look forward to future conversations and progress. To all of our amazing teachers, to Ms. Abosta, I had a wonderful meeting with Ms. Recky and Ms. Heifel last week, time has no meaning. And they shared a lot of these same concerns with me and has prompted some really wonderful conversations with Dr. Paramo and Dr. Hill and Ms. Cusio about some of the progressive discipline. Mr. Sarna brought it up at the end of what he was saying, this idea of how we sort of get funding. And we could go on and on about the state, yes, it's messed up. The end. It's super messed up. We're working with our legislators. I can't promise you that anything's going to change on the state level, but one of the things that we are thinking about is whether it's signature gathered parcel tax down the line or bond down the line, one of the things that we need to figure out how to do better is how to help our community understand that Burbank only excels in the way that Burbank excels, when the district excels. And a lot of the districts that Mr. Recky brought up have passed parcel taxes or bonds and they've, they've sort of put their money where their mouth is and says, we care so much about our public schools that we're willing to do this. So far Burbank is not. So we have to think about what can we do differently in order to help people understand in our amazing business community, in our chamber, with our realtors, with our families, that Burbank is the desirable community because of our schools. And if we want our community to stay desirable, then we invest in our schools. So we have to think about how we can do that. And in the meantime, we'll, I mean, I really look forward to hearing about how negotiations go tomorrow. I appreciate Ms. Abosta, your tireless advocacy and sharing a lot of information with me that I didn't have before. And I hear what people are saying about priorities, the optics, what it feels like we're prioritizing versus what it feels like to you we're prioritizing. And so that's, that's on my mind a lot. And I, you know, I mentioned to Mr. Ferguson, you know, talking a little bit about reserves, I think is an important conversation to have. I am, I always get very nervous because the last thing I want to do is put money into something and then have to lay people off because three years down the line, we have a huge budget crisis. But I also recognize that that fear maybe pales in comparison to the fear of continuing to lose so many phenomenal educators. I can talk all day about the lack of a parcel tax, it doesn't change the fact that we're still underpaying our staff. And it's not because anybody here wants to. Nobody here is happy with paying people less, nobody. But at some point, we need to, you know, doing the same things the same way and expecting a different result. Einstein said it, he was right. So it's time to think about things differently. So I just want to thank everybody for bringing all of this forward. I hope I didn't forget anybody. I know Ms. Bashar, is it Bashar or Bashar? I know that you've been in contact with the district, with legal teams, with our police. So I know that people are in conversation with you and I know that that will continue as long as you need it to. I think that, oh, and to Ms. Palacio, just to echo Dr. Hill, right now, we don't have any kiddos in the Monterey Infant Center that, whose parents are at Monterey. These are adults within the district and I know that we're working with them to provide affordable childcare options. So there are options, we're working with you, we're not just closing it with absolutely nothing left to support you, we're committed to supporting you. So thanks to everybody and I'll say it again, please reach out. I will respond to you. Please reach out and thank you to everybody.
Thank you and thank you to my colleagues. As you can see, we're a popular bunch tonight. Lots of different needs from all different angles. And so I'm going to do my best to respond as best as certainly I can. To Ms. Coronado, thank you very much for coming down tonight. As you've heard, because this is a personnel matter, this is not the format in which we can comment. Having said that, thank you. And it is clear that your parent community has really had a fabulous year with you. There are other metrics, other measures, things like that, that are, that go into these decisions. But it's clear that you've made an impact in certainly some of your families that you work with and you educated and thank you for that. You know, a lot of the other components of tonight are budget-related, all financial in their nature. I mean, it's not very exciting when frankly, you have to agendize the closure of an infant care room. That's the thing we get to vote on tonight. That brings me no joy. And frankly, I think we've been doing all we can to deploy flares where we can to keep this ship afloat, including putting a parcel tax on the ballot twice, knocking on doors, doing all we can in many fronts. Ms. Otis, I believe you spoke about compensation. When I joined this board, I think that it was likely a little bit more of a, kind of a valley of a, of a delta. We were, we said that as a board, when I joined, we were never going to touch the OPEB trust in order to spend that down to get more compensation to teachers. We've changed that. So we have done and moved and taken steps where we can to try and tackle the increased costs of retirement, the increased costs of healthcare, which impact your single members differently within BTA, within CSEA than those with families. We have done our best to try and get as much compensation to the table as possible. And I know that because I've also been a part of pushing it as somebody who feels very responsible for keeping our staff competitive, our staff wages as competitive as possible, for thinking outside the box. That's why I've asked as a part of that facility study, that we consider and talk about, long-term housing. And becoming a housing provider, again, things you would never expect that a school district would have to start anticipating. This is the kind of outside the box of thinking that we have to deploy in these moments in order to remain competitive in the ways that we can. Ms. Shipstad's here and, you know, our connection goes a ways back as a fifth grader who volunteered in your classroom. I know how much love you bring to your teaching. It pains me to see the level of stress that your comments brought to the microphone tonight. Unfortunately, a lot of those concerns are not new to me and I have been very concerned and for those who are routine watchers of our school board meetings, I have talked about SPED and support for SPED routinely. And... SPED and support for SPED routinely, and I am pushing routinely to try and get additional supports to teachers like you who are scared to death of screwing up and potentially having a situation out of their control that injures a child. That is where we are at in many of these situations, when we don't have replacement positions hired, when we don't have subs hired. That is the position we are in. And there is no one up here, as critical as I have been, and I have been highly critical at times of the prioritization of different actions. I know in our heart of hearts, that's not our intention, nobody's intention, yet I've asked for metrics repeatedly, benchmarks to work towards things, and I haven't seen that yet. So, the superintendent has given assurances tonight. Great. That's great. But it's time, you know, where's the beef? Let's get there. So, I understand that. A lot of this is going to be held through negotiations. I understand that as well, and we'll continue to work there. But it is a priority for me. This past weekend, or a week ago, when we talked about priorities, understanding these impacts, especially on our SPED community, was one of mine. So, and I'm not forgetting them, or the teachers who are, or the staff, support staff, who are juggling this right now. You are not forgotten by me. You are not forgotten by this board, and we are going to keep hammering at this until we get it. And you will see some of that tonight. So, I appreciate your comments. I'm sorry this is stressing you in the way that it is. It is stressing me too, and I feel very responsible for this. To Ms. Wilson Sarna, thank you for communicating on behalf of Bret Hart on this. This will be negotiated as well. It is important to hear points on this. It is also important, it's important to hear the points on this. I have long advocated and supported full-day kindergarten, because I believe that it is challenging for parents to navigate different norms, different times, et cetera. But that doesn't mean that it is without impacts. It doesn't mean, and it is again, important to hear from educators. So, I'm considering that, and I want you to know that I'm not shut off from it and that feedback, especially from Bret Hart, which clearly has a population that impacts differently. I'm really thinking about that. So, thank you, and we'll continue to work through that. To Mr. Sarna, on the other end. We are required by law, and not a bad law, and I'm not saying you are opposed to this in any way, to provide a free and public education for students, whether or not their parents can participate in education or not. Having said that, I think we've seen through partnerships with PTA, the power of programs like Ed 100 that equip parents with additional knowledge to understand how our district operates and exactly what kind of burdens we're facing, whether it's with pension funding, again, healthcare costs, you name it. And I think equipping parents and our community generally with more knowledge is good public policy, is good policy. That's why another one of my priorities, when we were talking about board priorities, was working with PTA council to establish a parent wiki, to help parents to kind of centralize some of the knowledge that creates additional work for our staff with additional questions, you name it, a centralized hub of information so that parents can access that information when they can, because it becomes a real challenge when you think, when you consider people's work hours, you name it, and the different demands, whether they have one child or six children or more. How do you build a universal access to information when the demands are so different from family to family? So, I really appreciate you offering to be a partner in that. I really appreciate the need to educate parents, and there's a whole new generation of parents every year that we have a real obligation to connect with information. So, I'm trying to do that. I'm trying to build on that. My board colleagues have agreed that that's an area we want to move forward in, and I think it's the beginning of a conversation, not the end of one. But again, it's the beginning of practices that we can build upon to raise the level of knowledge so that, again, we have people who are able to engage and really provide solutions from an informed place, and I think that that's what's critical. So, I appreciate that, and I just appreciate your feedback generally. It took notes, obviously, sorry. When it comes to our softball program, one, heard, you know, we hear you, and I see some familiar faces in the audience. It's good to see you. We care very much about your success. It's very clear that that's not communicated by the timeline in which we're able to address the issues you're dealing with. As Dr. Weisberg has said, this is something we've already brought up with our council colleagues, that we are actively trying to move. Politics doesn't move in semesters, unfortunately, but it is a priority for us, and I know it is a priority for our colleagues. And I have to say, you know, respectfully to my colleagues who said, "This should be easy." If it was easy, I think it would have been solved at this point in a lot of different ways. But that doesn't mean that we can't start moving on different actions now. So, first off, one, we will stay, we will be in communication with you. I think that's first and foremost. Second, when it comes to storage, okay, that is something we can handle now. If we need to pull from reserve funds to pay for a storage unit, let's get it done. So, I want to find out logistics on that, and if not, we'll add it to the next agenda with the consent of my colleagues, looking right and left. So, permission to agendize that, to get funding, to get at minimum a storage at those fields that we can rely on. So, that is the first thing. In 30 days, I will ask for an update on the fence, okay, or less. It doesn't handle your season. It will still, you know, but it is a timeline for certain where we can get an update. So, in 30 days or in two meetings from now, we will get another update on the fencing and discuss and provide you with an update. Okay? That's a board report promise from me. So, the storage is one. The second component is the fencing and what goes into that consideration. Yes?
I would just recommend on the storage, we have joint use funds already earmarked, just to accelerate, so we don't have to wait for, just if the board, we'll make sure we reach out to the city and say, "Why hasn't it happened?" It's just news to the team and I.
Okay. So, as soon as we have identified the path to storage, we email ourselves, and we send an email to Coach Nichols so that he can communicate to parents. Does that work? Great. Excellent. Third thing is, it does concern me, one, we are doing everything we can in situations that escalate and evolve very quickly. The situation with the gunman, you know, it is extremely hard when you have 2,500 different souls all over the campus at different moments to keep people informed, to keep people controlled, supported, and feeling safe. Mr. Nichols, thank you for illustrating that this is a dynamic and a component to our communication that needs to be handled. So, I do want to know for those students who have to walk to a location or move to a location, what is the procedure to inform them of a lockdown or a potential issue around a school site? How is that handled? How is that handled differently? I don't have an answer for that. Do we know tonight on how that is handled? If not, Dr. Hill?
I'd like to just follow up with the school to make sure. Some schools use a remind app to notify faculty, others, I just got to follow up with John Burrows, but we will report back out.
Okay. So, by the next meeting, I'm going to ask that it's a, because it's safety-related, and I'm concerned about that, how we communicate to students in particular who may be walking to a site if there is a security trigger of some sort. I think that's an important report back by next meeting. I want to make sure that we're taking care of those kiddos in those moments and that, you know, again, the variety of situations and the variety of ways in which we educate, including unfortunately using fields across town, that we consider that in that moment. So, I'll ask for that to be a report back as well in one meeting. So, that will happen at the next meeting, and in two meetings that we discuss the larger infrastructure needs regarding fencing, et cetera. I will say, some of this will come with city partners. It's not just a matter of funding. Some of this is about joint use, totally understood. On kicking games, I agree, like...
Baffled.
Baffled, okay. And baffled. So, and we're better than that fundamentally. So, I'm sorry we've let you down that way. So, I realize we will work with our city partners in that way, but I feel accountable to you tonight for that. So, I'm going to work on that with Dr. Weisberg in our joint meetings with the mayor and the vice mayor, and we will circle back. Ms. Tabit has worked on this issue as well for years. It has been a year upon your issue. Having said that, it's time to get it done. So, we will focus on that. Thank you for your time tonight. Please pay attention to the next two meetings so that this night wasn't just a waste for you, so you can see that we are being accountable to this moment and that we are doing our best to answer this. Last but not least, I will say this. When it comes to compensation, especially for our assistance subs, et cetera, it is very easy, when we are all starving for funding, to jump on different moments and to point out, "Look, Dr. Crowler, I could agree, I definitely agree on athletic transportation." I'm happy to hear. There's some efforts to do that. Some of your comments were pretty personal, and I don't support that. And I know you as an educator, and I just think that missed the mark and missed an example. Having said that, we are trying to get compensation to everybody so that we remain as competitive as possible. It gets really easy to jump on certain compensation levels. It gets real easy. And I am somebody who has historically been critical when it gets out of hand. Some of the districts that were shouted out tonight that are able to give double-digit raises are concentration fund districts, so that we are not able to compete in the level of funding that we get in those moments. That doesn't mean, though, that we have any less of an obligation to put as much of our money towards staying competitive as possible. So, I am supporting efforts to increase compensation across the board, and as BTA comes to the table and we negotiate with BTA, I will support efforts in that area as well, where funding exists, to the best of viability, as decided by our negotiating teams. So, know that. BASA, CSCEA, they have wrapped negotiations at this point. We have come to an agreement, and tonight is the night to agree to that. I can't wait till BTA gets over the finish line as well. And here's the other thing. If we delay these efforts on compensation, it actually delays the actual fund distribution by the county of Los Angeles. So, I want to get BTA done. I don't necessarily always love the optics of having contracts, frankly, before BTA's done. Having said that, I know how hard our folks are working, and I want to make sure everybody gets across the finish line in that way. So, those are my comments tonight. I want to again, thank everybody. I promise you, we are not an unfeeling bunch up here with no souls who don't care about these issues. We live with them daily in ways that frankly, this, we volunteered for. But these issues sit with us differently, and we're committed to doing our best to try and address these. So, thank you again tonight. We will stay updated. Coach Nichols, thank you for taking care of these. It's clear, we've got some outstanding ladies in this program who represent some of the very best of our values as a community, and I love that, and I can't thank you enough for it. Thank you. So, tonight, so we will move on in our agenda unless there are any other comments. My colleague is, I'm going to ask that we get through the public hearing first, and then we'll take a small recess so that folks can use the restroom. Thank you so much for coming down tonight. Okay, with that, we will move to item 12A.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Public disclosure in accordance with AB 1200, Chapter 1213, statutes in 1991, AB 2756, Chapter 52, statutes 2004, GC 3547.5, in the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the California School Employees Association. The Board of Education will now hold a public hearing, and I will, to allow the public the opportunity to comment regarding the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the California School Employees Association. Would anybody like to address the board on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on that item. Next, we will move to item 12B, public disclosure in accordance with AB 1200. The board will hold a public hearing in compliance with provisions of AB 1200, Chapter 1213, statutes 1992, AB 2756, Chapter 52, statutes 2004, GC 3547.5, to allow the public an opportunity to comment regarding the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the Burbank Association of School Administrators as presented. Would anybody like to address the board on this matter? If not, we will close public comment on this matter, and then we will take a two-minute break. It will be a little bit more than two minutes, likely around five minutes. Okay? Colleagues, if we could be back by five, in five, that will allow us to keep moving. Thank you. Thank you.
With the appropriate changes. Okay, great. So we'll bring back item 13E. Item 13F, approval of job description for Director of Human Resources and placement on the Salary Schedule A of the Certified Supervisors and Managers Salary Schedule Range A.
Mr. President.
Dr. Aga Khanian.
I move that the Board of Education approve the job description for Director of Human Resources and placement on Salary Schedule A of the Certified Supervisors and Managers Salary Schedule Range A as presented.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Ms. Tabit to approve the job description for the Director of Human Resources. Moving forward on discussion, discussion from my colleagues, Dr. W., Dr. Weisberg.
Hey, that's what my kids call me. I had a question about, I had a question about, so the, the, the long list of things that there, that there to do, the, we don't see mention of, well, I want to find where it is before I ramble, of like recruitment? Hold on, I saw it before, it's.
Towards the bottom.
It's towards the bottom, I just don't know where it is. I'm gonna find it. Oh, man. All that to say, I wonder if we can make recruitment more of a present feature unless, and this is a question for Dr. Niemann, I think, unless because of this position, then the recruitment will, you'll be able to focus more on that, because I know, you know, with the 12,000 other things happening, because of, you know, the, the consistent concerns being raised about wanting to make sure we're filling positions quickly, so wanting to make sure that that's a primary goal of this new hire, that they're really working to fast-track and find creative and dynamic ways of, of hiring new people.
Dr. Niemann.
The second to last bullet on that first page says, directs and supervises the recruitment, selection, orientation, transfer, assignment, evaluation, separation.
Yes, that is, that's what I was referencing.
So you would like something more than that?
Yes, but I don't have a good suggestion as to what, so that's not a very helpful statement to me. I mean, in crafting this, in crafting the description, is your thought that this person is going to be really taking the, like, doing the heavy lifting for recruitment?
I do, I think that this person is going to be really helping to manage the day-to-day operations of the HR office. There are many days I don't get to interact with my own staff.
Right.
And things like the Recruitment Fair next Wednesday at the Adult School, they would be helping to spearhead that. Recruitment Fair in Pasadena on April 13th and also May 4th, they would be helping to push that through. So we have five techs that really push recruitment, and then two sub-techs that push recruitment. And this person would really be working with them to streamline processes, get things out, look creatively, reach out to universities, that, that type of thing.
So then I, I wonder if there's a way to just highlight that a little bit more, especially as people are like, why are we creating these minimum? There's, I believe there's really good reason for the creation of these two positions, but I think, you know, even if it's something as, including in the minimum qualifications, something about experience with recruitment and retention, putting that there, just so it is a quality we're really looking for when we bring on this person. I don't, I don't see it in the minimum qualifications, but I could be missing something.
Yeah, we typically, just so you know, in job descriptions, we don't put really specific things typically in the qualifications, because we want to get a broad pool of candidates, and then we use the interview process to see who has the experience that we need.
Okay, so maybe if that's something we can focus on within the process, and it doesn't have to, it doesn't belong in qualifications.
Any other questions for my colleagues?
Thank you.
On, on this front, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this tonight, but with some hesitation. So I've asked for benchmarking on recruitment for custodial subs, haven't gotten it yet. I need that. So I'm, and I've asked, and none of my colleagues have objected, so I'm asking for that in 60 days or less as a board report. That's one. Two, I would like, as a part of this job description, some component, so building somewhat on Dr. Weisberg's comments, develops and implements an annual recruitment and retention plan for the district. This doesn't need to be extensive, but I would like this added with recruitment and retention strategies, especially ones that are targeted at answering our most pressing Again, 60 days, I want to see benchmarking, but I think as a part of this, we need to make it an annual focus that recruitment and retention is, is critical, and it's really hard, frankly, when I hear employees, you know, entry-level employees really struggling, our custodial, our cafeteria workers, for us to be adding admin right now in an effort to answer their challenges, and, and I feel responsible for this position more, voting for it. And, and so I, I can't support it unless I have those components added and those assurances from district staff. So if, if those components can be added, then I'm happy to support this tonight, but I, I really need to see it, because, and, and if not, I will actually take steps to ask that we revoke this approval, because we need to get it done, and we need to send a very sincere message to our employees that we're addressing this. I don't doubt the intention, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're accountable for adding additional administrative positions. Ms. Tabit.
I was just looking at the public hearing again. There, my memory, I apologize, there's a lot going on in this head all the time, but in addition to the CSCA 5%, there are certain job classifications that we're going back to look at. That is correct, right? So one of them is custodians, cafeteria workers, and.
Instruction.
Instruction.
Yep.
All the things that everybody's worried about, they're looking at their salary right away. I think we, if you could think about this for a second, give them some time to get this done, and give them 60 days, whatever, and then see how recruitment goes.
I, I, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, and I did, so I'm sorry about that. We've been talking about this for eight months. So I, I've got to be accountable here and, and say, we, since spring, if not earlier. So again, I don't doubt the intention, but we got to, we got to demonstrate now, I think compensation is part of it, but I've asked for, okay, fine, then let's hire four. What, what's the numbers we're working towards? How are we working? How are we changing strategies for recruitment? That is what I've asked to see, and that's what I haven't seen.
Okay, and I hear that.
So that, that's what, that's the component. So I'm not beaten up on folks right now, I've given, I've given time, and now I'm asking for accountability on that front. So that's where I'm going from it. And I, I have checked in with staff, so I'm not.
Not throwing, nobody, you're not throwing anyone into the bus, I get that.
I don't, I don't think that's ever my intention, having said that, you know.
I just think it's, that, that compensation is a big part, and it will definitely, you know, behoove that situation, hopefully.
Yep.
With my, that's the way I believe, anyway. So anyway, that's fine.
Yep, negotiations will take care of part of it, but it is, it is a component, and that's why I also think it's a recurring conversation, because we, again, we are not going to have the money to finance our way out of this either.
True.
So that's why making it a recurring annual conversation keeps it top of mind for leadership of this district. So with that, any further conversations or comments on this front? Thank you again to district staff for hearing me on that front. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. We'll move forward with item 13G, correct? That's where we're at? Yes, adoption of Resolution 17 for the reduction or discontinuance of particular kinds of service. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education adopts Resolution 17 for reduction or discontinuance of particular kinds of services as presented.
Second. Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded, it's okay, everybody's.
No one, no one likes these kinds of.
I would have done it.
Yeah. Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Ms. Tabit, I'll give it to you, sorry, for the reduction or discontinuance of particular kinds of service. Further discussion on this item?
Yep.
Dr. Weisberg.
You can call me Doc, that's what everybody calls.
It's all good, I want to make sure, though.
I think this is my ignorance. You're like, yes, yes it is.
That's just my face now.
You're just like this all the time. She's going to ask a question. Just in looking at all the, the positions, and knowing that we have so many vacant.
This one is certificated.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no, no, I know.
Okay.
So this won't, and it looks like there's only one position that's being eliminated due to a lack of funds, right? In this list?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make, that was my big question.
Okay.
Okay.
Further discussion on this item? So, and I, I will also say, at times it gets a little, you can look at this agenda, and it's like, wait, we're giving compensation in one area, and then we're terminating in others. This is now required by state law, that we issue notices by the 15th of this month. So the timing is unfortunate.
Right.
And obviously, to those impacted, it's terrible. Having said that, this is required by law, and that, this is a component that we are monitoring. So again, the agenda doesn't look great, and I acknowledge that, but this is also a requirement by state law. And Dr. Niemann.
I just want to say that while these, the, the PKS is an elimination of positions, and we understand that there are people attached to the positions, and so it's a very personal experience, but we have jobs for all of these individuals.
That's, I was just about to ask.
So their, their position may be gone, but their home in, in BUSD is not.
Yeah, I thank you for saying that, and also, if you read through it, you know, many of these positions are vacant, which means, so I, I'm glad that you said that, thank you.
Having said that, we know this is a rumor mill kind of town, so when you, again, see these agendas, and we are giving raises in one component, and in the others, doing layoffs or RIF notices or any form of that, again, we do want to say that this is as a result of state law and how our process has to be carried forward. So again, thank you to the staff who always are doing creative balancing where possible to keep as many of our employees with us as possible. With that, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 4-0. Moving on to item number 13H, which is the adoption of Resolution 18, implementing classified layoffs.
President Ferguson?
President, or Madam Tabit, or Ms. Tabit.
Chief.
I am tired.
Former president.
Former President Tabit. The artist formerly known as President Tabit.
Nice.
I move that the Board of Education's on two pages, it's, you know, confusing. Board of Education adopt Resolution 18, implementing classified layoffs as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Further discussion on this item? Dr. Niemann.
Thank you, President Ferguson. I, I also want to clarify on the classified, because this list looks very daunting.
Yeah.
It's a number of positions, and as you stated earlier, most of them are vacant. Twelve of them are not, twelve of them have bodies attached to them. Eight of them have homes, they have permanency in their position, and they will find another home. The other four that do not have permanency and have no place to bump, we meet with CSCA and we find homes for them. So they have, we have language in the contract that allows us to place them in, like, positions, they have to accept it, but we, we work with CSCA and the individual to find them a home.
That was my question. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Niemann, and thank you for the due diligence on that front. With that, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 4-0. Onto item 13A, just to reference my colleagues, there's an amendment on the desk on this one, so I'm happy to do the motion with the amended language as it's in front of me.
Great.
I will move that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the Burbank Community YMCA to provide services for the 2023 Elementary Summer Program, not to exceed $140,000 from Title I fundings, the designated accounting string, $70,000 from fiscal year 2022, 2023, and $70,000 from fiscal year 2023, 2024, and $30,000 from fiscal year, whoa, lost my place, 2022, 2023, $30,000 from fiscal year 23, 24, effective March 3, 2023, through June, Ju, sorry, July 31, 2023, and that the authority to sign this agreement be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR 3314 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms., by me, Mr. Ferguson, and seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Mr. Hill, or Dr. Hill, will you give an update on, on the changes here?
Actually, I asked Dr. Knappik come to the microphone, as he's doing that briefly. Real quick, we last, through the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, we've expanded our summer school program. Last year was 30 days. We received feedback from families, and that's a long time in the summer for them to do that. So we've been looking at ways to have some days during the school year, so this is the first year we're going to do five days during spring break, 25 days through the summer. I'll let Dr. Knappik fill in.
Great synopsis. It is a 30-day requirement to have extended day beyond the regular school year, as Dr. Hill had said, so 25 days in the summer program, five days during spring break, and this contract is with the YMCA to provide that service with Power Scholars during spring break, and then with the Learn, Grow, Thrive program in the summer. And it is from, in the morning, 8:30-ish until 5:30-ish at night. And then, of course, we would take off the holidays in the summertime, Juneteenth, June 19th, that is, July 3rd, and then July 4th. Emerson will host the summer program, and then the YMCA Primary Campus will go ahead and host spring break.
Perfect. Yeah, we, we did want to update that for our families, and Ms. Cottone is in the audience tonight. This is a phenomenal program, and it's been a phenomenal partnership. I really want to thank the YMCA for being responsive to, to parent feedback on this front, to be able to have a spring break program, I think is really great. I grew up as a Y kid, and, and while we aren't on the same page about every program, we are certainly on the same page about this one, because it's been a phenomenal program for our young people and to curb things like learning loss, et cetera. So this is an excellent strategy, it's a way to think outside the box, and I appreciate it personally as, as one board member. Any other comments, questions? With that, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries five, or 4-0. Onto item 13J, which is also amended, so I will do the motion on that front, just so that the language is updated. I'll move that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the Boys and Girls Club of Burbank to provide services for Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, Opportunities Program for Summer 2023 Services, not to exceed $175,000, effective March 3, 2023, through July 31, 2023, and that the authority to sign the agreement be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR 3314 as presented.
Second.
Moved by myself, Mr. Ferguson, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Any further discussion on this item?
Sir.
Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 13K is also an item as amended, which is the closure of the Monterey Infant Center. With that, I will move the Board of Education approve the closure of the Monterey Infant Center effective June 30, 2023. What is the amendment on this? Sorry, the PowerPoint is amended. Oh, okay, so it's really not amended, okay. It's just the PowerPoint. With, so obviously, the closure of any program, the shuttering of any program is really, it's just, it's so sad. And, and it's hard for the families who are impacted. I want to say that both Dr. Weisberg and I have worked, have spoken with Dr. Hill to make sure and to understand the impacts on the families. We want to thank the YMCA and others who are agreeing to, to help us and to help the families who are impacted by this decision. Again, this is not what we would like to be doing. We received assurances, one, that there are very few school districts, if not any, in the region, who are doing this kind of work any longer. It is too expensive, it is too challenging with state licensing requirements, which, again, are well-intentioned, but nevertheless, create financial burdens for school districts who are already cash-strapped, and it is really challenging for us to answer this need. It's a very specific age group that is impacted, and we realize that the number of beds and the number of seats, and for this especially age group, is devastating to a community like ours, and it, and it breaks our heart in so many ways, but we are grateful for the partnership of the YMCA. I'll let Dr. Knappik present, and that may have covered a lot of it, but I just wanted to just say very, you know, we're accountable for closing programs to this community, and.
Can I add to something?
Absolutely.
But originally, this program was started as a teen mother program, and the evolution that we have gone through, where young women today are more educated on terms, and so that those situations, they may, they may not happen or occur at all, which is why we may see, I mean, we have no teen mothers, haven't had any for a long time, and it's just become an infant childcare room. So I think there's, I'm looking, I'm sorry, my fault in life is there has to be a silver lining, I look for it all the time. So that's my silver lining, I'm sorry that we have to close it, but the intention of the original program is long since been overcome, and so I'm happy, that's a good positive thing, so, anyway, just had to throw that in there.
Dr. Knappik.
So if I could have the PowerPoint, please? Thank you. So I did want to share with the board and with the community, just a quick update about child development programs and the situations that we're in with regards to finances, and give a quick analysis. So with the Monterey State subsidized preschool, we do have two different kinds of services there. We have a state subsidized program, of which we have five children in that program, and then we have a fee-based program, all within the same unit, where there's one child in that unit. We are projecting that we'll have a funding of $117,000, $114,000, and that with the family fees, $30,688. Operating expenses, we estimate them, the projected actuals are $326,820. We are projecting that we anticipate a net loss of at least $179,020, and that will be picked up by the general fund. So that is a little bit, a little bit of concern at the Monterey Center. Quick snapshot on Washington State Preschool, which is housed at Washington Elementary School. We have one classroom that could serve 24 kids, our current enrollment there is 21 students. We have a state contract where we receive $362,714,000. Our estimated operating actuals are $362,714,000. We don't expect any kind of gain or loss with that program, but once again, this is just an estimate, and it could be that we could go on either way. So we do, we'd like to see more students in that program, fee-based if at all possible. With our school-aged program, General Childcare, we have three classrooms, 67 students, 18 at Heart, two students in Room 31, two students at Heart in Room 32, and then 28 at Washington. We have our state contract where we have revenue coming into that program, $46,4,011. No family fees expenditures estimated at $461,327,000, and we project a possible $2,684,000 net gain. And if there would be any kind of loss at the end of the school year due to, let's say, we had to tap into agency substitutes, then that's going to go ahead and hit that balance at the very bottom there, and it's allowed to pick up some costs out of the restrictive fund there. Moving on to the Around the Bell program, a quick snapshot, the Around the Bell program is located at all of our elementary sites. Operating hours are from 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, and we do take a break during the day. We serve students in TK through 5th grade. You can see what our current fees, they're $37 a week, $105 a week for, first through 5th, and the projected revenue, $2,555,547. Operating expenditures, $3,185,033, so we're anticipating a loss of $629,557. And this loss is due to the salary settlements that we're going, that we're going through right now, and that we've already settled with. We're looking at our projected revenue compared to our actual expenditures and the gap there, and then also agency services, as we have to outsource for our substitutes oftentimes, which costs us double, even triple, to be honest with you. So that's a huge deficit in that program, too. Also want to share with the board and the community, just a breakdown of the enrollment, you can see here.
Before you move forward.
Absolutely.
Is the, sorry, the presentation referenced ELOP funds. Can you break that down for members of the public?
Absolutely. ELOP funds are Expanded Learning Opportunities Program funds, and they are funds that supplement childcare in general. So it pays for unduplicated students who are socioeconomic disadvantaged students, our English learners, our foster and our homeless students. So when they go to programs like ATB, when they go to programs like the YMCA or to the Boys and Girls Club, we pick up the fees through ELOP. And so like in our summer program, we pay for all of our salaries, too, and programming those kind of things, out of ELOP. Back on the slides, ATB enrollment, there you see a breakdown, TK through 5, and the number of students per site, so we have 569 total students in the Around the Bell program. It's tight, we're full, we don't have seats, we have a waiting list, as a matter of fact. Okay? I'm going to advance this slide here, and this really goes on to the next board item that we'll be discussing in a few minutes, but there is a proposal on the table to increase fees by 10%. So TKK, looking at $150 a week, grades 1 through 5, $116 a week, very competitive in the market, too. We've talked about this before, about we need to be viable economically, so we need about 30 students in a classroom to break even, and so we watch enrollment very, very And then just a real quick snapshot, because we know we've outsourced the Horace Mann Children's Center to the YMCA, so they have five classrooms, 61 children enrolled there. They're going to be adding a sixth classroom with more students enrolling, 65, more on the way, they're fully staffed, and then you'll see their breakdown by month, what the rates are. These are monthly rates, I just want to reemphasize, okay? And with that, I'll pause for questions.
Thank you. So obviously, this is pretty distressing news for the Child Development Fund. You know, we can only do so much to slow down some of this, some of the costs here. Again, $600,000 on the budget, potentially more, we don't know how funding will be impacted by the upcoming state budget, but this is a significant impact on the general fund. So what I will ask is that staff prepare, or that we actually have a study session on this in particular, to try and understand some of the issues. Dr. Knappik certainly outlined, but this is also where, again, recruitment is literally costing us.
Yes.
And, and really putting in danger some of these, some of our funds, and we really need to address that. And, and as a board, really need to take a look at some of, you know, the challenges that we're, you know, facing, the health of this fund long-term, because again, our failure to act on this and to kind of, again, develop strategies to answer these challenges are going to either, are going to create additional problems for us. So I'm going to ask without the objection of my colleagues, that we'll move forward on scheduling a study session on this item, so we can understand this more and be able to talk about it, because it's going to impact everything. Without objection, we'll move forward with that. Thank you, Dr. Knappik.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move forward on a vote. And as you did reference, one of the strategies to answer some of this is a fee increase, which will be our next agenda item. But again, this is all just deploying some parachutes, it's slowing down the dissent, but, but at the end of the day, we're still following, folks, so we got to address this. Dr. Aga Khanian.
Quickly, Mr. Knappik, just for viewers and clarification purposes, school districts are not required by law to provide infant care, are they?
That is correct.
So there are, and we are one of the few districts.
One of the very few.
Thank you.
We were.
We were.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, unfortunately, 4-0. With that, we'll move to item 13.
I can't get the motion, can you make the motion?
I did, and it was seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. And thank you for calling out when, if you don't have it, I want to make sure Ms. Quiterio, who takes our, our minutes, has that information. With that, we'll move to item 13L, approval of fee increase for Around the Bell. Can I get a motion?
Doc, uh.
You can make me a doctor.
Oh, you're the doctor.
I know, so many people forget doctor, and I just added it. Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed rate increases as indicated in the Board action item above for the Around the Bell program, effective July 1, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Weisberg, who does have a doctorate.
I should look at my student.
And.
Second.
To move forward with the approval of the fee increase for Around the Bell, any further discussion on this?
I do have a question. Now, so the programs like Around the Bell are becoming, you know, in high demand right now, especially, you know, recent study came out that, you know, childcare is a very, very big issue. Now, you know, do we have the capacity of expanding any of these programs in any locations based on what we're seeing out there right now?
The challenge that we have is probably two or threefold. One is staffing. It is extremely hard to staff the program. Another challenge is, we don't have the space. So we're housing it in our elementary schools. In general, the elementary schools are pretty much packed, between the regular programs and the other, other programs that they have at the school, special education, they're pretty much packed and filled.
Just out of curiosity, have you ever seen any districts that have dedicated facilities just for programs like Around the Bell, where they commute them, but it becomes like the place where all the after-school programs are?
I don't know what for a fact, but my guess is probably in a larger school district that has a facility that maybe they have, like a neighborhood school, that two or three schools feed into that school for childcare.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Further questions on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. We'll move to item 13M, the acceptance of gifts. Ms. Tabit.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. I move that the Board of Education take formal action accepting the following gifts to the district and that our esteemed Board President please convey, sorry, his appreciation to our very generous and greatly appreciated donors.
I enthusiastically second that.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Tabit. Usually I'm esteemed, and so today I'm esteemed, so I appreciate that.
Dr. W.
Moved by, that's right.
Today, I'm esteemed.
So thank you, Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian.
Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastically, to move forward with the acceptance of gifts. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries four zero. With that, I'll read and enthusiastically say thank you. So, you know, we receive gifts of all sorts, large and small, but again, all of them make a difference in improving the educational experience of young people, and for that we say thank you. So to the following donors, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for contributing to improve the educational experiences of our young people and of our staff who deliver that education. First, to the Stevenson Elementary School Friends, wait, FRC, Fundraising Committee, thank you. Got to love new acronyms all being incorporated right and left. To the Stevenson Elementary Fundraising Committee, who wishes to donate to the district $37,366.30 to be used for outdoor science school at Ralph Lewis, Ralph Lewis Stevenson Elementary School. To Washington Elementary Fundraising Committee, who wishes to donate to the district $3,816.80 to be used for outdoor science school at George Washington Elementary School. To the Jefferson Elementary Committee, Fundraising Committee, who wishes to donate to the district $3,200 to be used to purchase radios, walkie-talkies at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. To the Luther Burbank PTSA, who wishes to donate to the district $6,550 to be used for a field trip, for field trip transportation at Luther Burbank Middle School. To Disney, to the Disney Elementary PTA, It's Late, who wishes to donate to the district $6,407 to be used for the Gary Dance Field Trip buses and custodial services at Walt Disney Elementary School. And to the Edison Elementary Fundraising Committee, who wishes to donate to the district $9,000, who will be, which will be used for consultants at Thomas Edison Elementary School. Again, no matter how big or small, all donations are very much appreciated, and we thank you again. With that, we will move to the consent calendar. We do have an amendment on the personnel report, so I'm going to ask that we move items 14, I will move items 14B through item, through 14H, except for which items board members wish to pull. Any pulls?
No.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian, to approve items 14B through 14H. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Item carries four zero. We'll go to the personnel report. Item 14A, can I get a motion?
President Ferguson, I move that we approve Personnel Report Number 22-23-14 as amended.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian, to approve the amended Personnel Report. Any questions on that front?
Uh-uh.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries four zero. With that, we will head to our final period of public comment. So yes, we do have a new final public period of public comment, now back, but three minutes. Anybody like to address the board? Thank you, Ms. Sebastian. Come on down.
Sorry, I didn't fill out a card.
No, the price is right.
We'll let it pass this one.
As long as you say $1.
My question still is, and it doesn't have to be answered today, is the addition of positions with the one-time funds, because I don't know how many times I've been up here and said we could have done a lot in the past with the one-time funds, and it was always no. So it's just a little bit difficult sometimes, you know, because I don't hear you talking about structural deficits when other people are asking for raises, but we hear it. And so that's just a concern of mine, and in particular, the Special Ed Response Team. For $712,000, I don't even know what that team is. Like generally, if you ask teachers, like, what are the things that will keep you here? Like recruit and retrain, it's generally not positions, just so that you're aware of that. But if positions create systems, that's a different story. But, you know, I've been here a long time, and so it's reached the point where when, under different leadership, when are those systems? And it can't be just one person or two people or three people. Systems have to be put into play, because you can talk all you want, you can hire 10 more people, but what is going to translate back into the classroom? So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to staff for response and then to the board. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Sebastian. Real quick, and we can have a deeper conversation about the Special Ed Response Team with Ms. Casio. The feedback we received from general ed teachers as well as special ed teachers was that when students have not been placed on IEP, Individual Education Plan, and they're having behavioral issues, they need to be assessed, we have to, we would need to pull team members off of their current caseloads to assist with that. So the response team is to have a team of a psychologist, behavior interventionist, administrators that can provide those immediate supports for those students in their classrooms, work with the current teachers, get the assessments done, get the individual education plan, and get the supports the child needs. So it's supposed to be faster and help them out. What we've done in the past is we try to pull existing staff to do that, and that just burdens them even more. So that was the thinking behind it in conversations with our principals, our teachers, and our support staff at the school sites, but we can have a longer conversation on that.
Dr. Weisberg.
Am I also wrong, maybe my recollection, when we talked about this position a while back, is it's also meant to help with IEP caseloads, which, again, was, is a huge problem that we hear coming up? So that, I think it ideally does address all of the, like, some major concerns and hopes, hopefully create some systems, to your point, Ms. Sebastian. I guess we will see, but I am excited, really excited about this because I think it is going to make a real impact almost immediately, I hope.
And Dr. Aga Khanian, Ms. Tabit? I will say, so one-time funding, so it is multi-year funding. It's basically funding for two years.
Yeah, eventually it'll end, though.
Eventually.
It's different than ongoing.
A hundred percent, you're absolutely right. It is one-time funded, one-time funding that's released over two years at this point. Originally, the concept was three years. So, one, we want to continue advocacy to try and keep that funding in an ongoing way, but very, very much aware that this is basically one-time funding that will last two years.